Okay, good morning. It is, I'm first off, I'm Commissioner Ed Rothstein. It's Tuesday, November 22nd. Wishing everybody early happy Thanksgiving with family and friends. As we always do, we're going to start with a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. Just for me, thinking of that horrific act that happened in Colorado Springs along with Idaho and other places, but what happened in Colorado Springs was just horrendous. And fortunately, a Army veteran helped solve this issue and tackle the gunman, but not before a handful of folks were murdered. So let's keep them in our thoughts and prayers as well.
Thank you.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And honestly, I bring this up because as we say the pledge and we say indivisible, there's so much divisiveness that's still happening, whether it be on social media or just the rhetoric we hear about, you know, what right and wrong looks like. Well, it was pretty horrible what happened. Okay, on completely different notes, let's go through a priority Carol and see what's going on. Commissioner Boucher.
Well, thank you very much. Well, happy holidays, everyone. Thanksgiving season in front of us. Time to share our family and loved ones. And I think everyone seems to be in a pretty good mood here with the short week. I want to take the opportunity to start reading off the name of some of the new hires for the county government and welcome them aboard. Megan Erpenstein, Program Coordinator, Wreckin Parks. Howard Gross, Electrician, Facilities. Matthew Swininger, Truck Driver, Roads Operations. Albert Scholver, Jr., Engineering Technician, Public Works. Bruce Fritz, Truck Driver, Snow Removal, which is going to be very important soon. And Corey O'Donnell, Bach Miller, Visitation Center, Circuit Court. Welcome aboard. And here we have some photos. I was at Exploration Commons. We had a meeting over there. We, you see two of the incoming commissioners there sharing at the event. And also Jason out here in the audience, one of our fellow history nerds. It was nice to share today, talking about history and imparting that upon the next generation. Always emphasize that we learn history as adults, but we have a big responsibility to impart that upon the children that carry on where we let off. I went to the college. They had the environmental symposium and a lot of students and children made artwork out of the recycled goods. That was quite fascinating. I like to see the artistic talent. All this stuff is made from basically trash, I guess you could say, for lack of a better word, recyclable items turned into art. And these type of programs are inspirational to children. It sparks your creativity. There's Councilman Kevin Dayhoff, what a wonderful man Kevin is. I appreciate all he does. This is a giant robot looking thing made of cardboard. It was a very festive and fun event. And I want to give a special thanks to Director Heinz and all of his staff in their Land Resource Management Facility or Department for helping put this together. And it connects what they're doing with the practical and the people to instill that into the next generation. We also have the breakfast with Santa for the Career Technology Center, December 8, 7 to 11. There's food, so of course I'm always, I'll be there. That's a wonderful event. Santa will be there. I will not be to Santa. Commissioner Weaver, are you volunteering for Santa?
No, no.
He just does the voiceover for Santa. Another wonderful event. Go out there and support these students because I know, having been a vocational student and competing nationally for welding, that these fundraisers are very critical for the students to raise the funds to be able to travel and compete in these competitions. So please patronize them. And this will be my last walk in the park. I guess technically I won't be a county commissioner because it'll be on the seventh, a few days after my term ends, but I'll be out there. I think I'm going to dress as an elf this time. And we're going to collect toys for a wonderful cause. Together we own it. I know Commissioner Rothstein is a big supporter of them. They do wonderful work. And the more people we see out there being festive and sharing and in support. It's a toy drive. We're going to collect toys for children. Not everyone is as fortunate as others, so we like to pitch in as in giving that we shall receive, I always say. So that's December 7th. We'll be at Bear Branch Park, which Director Daggett says that is the gem of all the parks in Carroll County. And I won't disagree. There's a lot of trails back there. It's easy to get lost out there. I've gotten a little disoriented myself, but hopefully we won't get lost on the walk. So we'll do a walk and collect toys for children. Is there anything else? All right. One last thing I want to mention is I received from our Economic Director this morning, Jack Lieber, this press release for the Workforce Center recognized as Champion of Manufacturing. Director of Economic Development, Jack Lieber said, "We are particularly proud to nominate and recognize the Carroll County Workforce Development Team for training 30 welding students through a partnership with Earlbeck Gas and Technology using its mobile classroom." This new innovative work helped local manufacturers meet some of their hiring needs and create new small business enterprises. The 30 trained welders earned 68 American Welding Society certificates in just nine weeks. And Carroll County employers had the opportunity to meet and hire trainees as part of their program. It was a win-win. I'm so proud of what that department does. It changes lives. You know, people sometimes have no direction. They don't know what they want to do. And training programs like this that our county provides creates productive citizens in their future. So thank you everyone for all you've done. Have a wonderful day.
Okay, Commissioner Weaver.
Yeah, first of all, I guess we had the tree lighting in Hampstead the other night. What an event. Hampstead comes in, Fire Department, in a fire truck and any sleigh, and they had a huge turnout. I think probably 1,500 people showed up for that event. It was unbelievable. Also, we had the CNR ribbon cutting. Restaurant in Hampstead opened up, had expanding, which was great. And I have a picture of it with the owner of CNR. And we gave him a certificate for expanding business in Carroll County. Delegate Shoemaker is also in attendance. And the other item I had was honoring veteran Tech Sergeant Joseph Farrenhold. The bridge over Liberty Reservoir signed dedication to him. He actually joined the Army at age 15. A lot about his age. Got into the Army National Guard. He, during World War II, had four Silver Stars and Purple Heart. So it was interesting to see his family and dedication of this. Had a huge turnout. It was really a very nice event. So that was the highlight, I think, of my week here.
Fantastic. Commissioner Frazier.
Well, just wanted to say Thanksgiving is upon us. Everyone enjoy, enjoy time with family and friends. If you're traveling, you're expecting to travel this weekend to be almost pre-pandemic traveling. So they're expecting a lot of people at the airport and on the roads. So get there early. Do all the things that you normally would do, you know, before the pandemic for traveling to go see family and friends. And enjoy the time off. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks. Commissioner Wentz.
It's kind of abbreviated this morning.
It's a very nice tie. Nice tie.
And shirt to match.
And a shirt to match. It is.
And I have to say, I picked a shirt out. My wife wasn't even home when I picked this out.
No comment.
Oh, boy. Okay. See what I started. All right. Good morning. What are we doing here?
Are you on a stool?
No, I'm not on a stool.
Oh, okay.
I'm not sure why that's up, but we, that was a week or so ago. But anyway, we did, yeah, we did honor the volunteers at, at the Wreckin Parks, which is an amazing program. So kudos to all our volunteers in the county. Speaking of volunteers, you mentioned Thanksgiving. Everybody's mentioning that. Let's be careful out there. A lot of turkeys are going to go in the oven. I spent one Thanksgiving Eve watching an entire apartment complex burn down as a result of a Ravens player deciding to deep fry a turkey on his balcony. People still deep fry turkeys, which is interesting to me. It's, it's an interesting taste, but whatever. Anyway, common sense when you're utilizing ovens and utilizing those deep fryers, reasonable distance away from any structure. And let's keep our volunteers with their families where they should be instead of out on the road on fire engines. So that would be a good, good, good time if we can do that. Governor's Emergency Management Advisory Council met yesterday. We had a very good meeting. And apparently they're working on who's supposed to be on that committee and who's not moving forward. And I've been advised that as a result of my background, I will remain on that commission with the new governor for the next two years. So I'm honored, not necessarily a representative of county government, but a representative of Carroll County on that Emergency Management Advisory Council. So I appreciate the, what we're going to do moving forward there. Several of us today will go out to the Farm Museum and pay tribute to Scott Holnecker. Scott has been a staple at the Farm Museum for
15 years.
Yeah, at least. I was going to say maybe more than that because I think he volunteered for a while there too, or anyway.
Still is.
Going to miss him. Scott is retiring. So wish him the best as he moves forward. I don't know how many folks, sadly, you get to an age where the first thing you, well, the only thing that really is good in the paper anymore are the cartoons and the horoscopes. Everything else seems to be whatever.
The Ravens' win-loss record is good.
Well, you, The Times does a, I mean, that's, it's the Baltimore Sun, but whatever. Anyway, I always, at this age, I always go to the, to the obituaries first, which is, which is bad. But I want to give a shout out to the Union Bridge Fire Company and also our deepest sympathies from county government for their loss. Reverend Richard Michaels passed away over there. Reverend Dick was a fixture at Union Bridge Fire Company for years. And I actually took paramedic with him. And it was, that's been years ago, but he was just an incredible individual. He was a pastor at the Lutheran Church over there for 45 years, I believe, which is sort of unheard of for pastors because they move around, you know, quite a bit. So Union Bridge is having a, is having a memorial service and viewing for he, him on Saturday. And on behalf of all of us here in county government and those that have been in the fire service here for years, we want to express our deepest sympathies to, to all of the great folks at Union Bridge. Couple of things coming up. Eric handed me this. Their tree lighting is 7:00 PM in Union Bridge on Saturday, right? Is that the second? Saturday, the second, which is next?
Next Saturday.
Next Saturday, following Saturday. And the Miracle on Main Parade is this Saturday evening in Westminster. A lot of folks spend a lot of time with, with floats and what have you. That's at 5:00 PM. And then Westminster City will light their Christmas tree in the little courtyard across from the library right after the parade. And that parade is led by who, Commissioner Rothstein?
I'm not sure. Is this an elf in a green suit?
Santa leading?
The award-winning.
I'm just saying.
Santa leading this year. I'm not sure. And then a shameless plug for the award-winning Westminster band. Their, their holiday concert is Monday evening at Carroll Community College at 7:00 PM. Completely volunteer group. There's about 50 of us that are playing. If you can fit it into your schedule, I would recommend you come out there. It's going to be a great event. These folks have spent a lot of time practicing and they're even good, we're even going to be singing that evening. So, so if you get a chance, come out to the college at 7:00 PM on Monday evening. I want to thank staff for throwing this session in on Tuesday. We have a lot yet that we'd like to accomplish. So thank you to staff. We typically don't do Tuesdays, but I'd like to thank those that have worked tirelessly to get us to the end on several issues that we'd like to get to the end to, as we only have, how many days left, Dick?
You said 13?
I did say that. That's correct. So.
Whatever you tell me, that's what's left.
So other than that, everybody have a great Thanksgiving. Be careful on the roads. Three accidents this morning prior to 7:00 AM. So, you know, let's, let's, let's be careful out there on the roads too. So I think I did enough public safety for this morning.
And on the 14th, there will be a continuation of government.
There you go.
Okay.
Yep. Back to you, sir.
Looking forward to.
And you will continue.
Greeting the farewell to my colleagues and welcoming the new for the 62nd Board. I know the, the message or public release or whatever it was called is, a press release was sent out.
For both events.
For both events. Correct. So.
December the first is kicking us out the door if you wish.
First or second?
First.
First?
First.
And then.
And then the fifth is the inauguration and swearing in of the five new commissioners to continue our government in the 62nd Board. Last week, said farewell to Mike Galeazzo, the head of our Regional Management Institute, Manufacturing Institute. 30-plus years he has been working selflessly in supporting the industrial community in Maryland. 750 of his closest friends were in attendance for that event. On Thursday, I was blessed to participate and attend. That, I don't know when that is. That actually, when was that? Oh, that, that's the Reserve Center. That wasn't, that was a happy snap. I think that Senator Hester, and congratulations to her in her win as Senator of the newly formed District Nine. And that was Secretary Owings and Deputy Secretary Finn, who have been a great support of Carroll County in getting our veterans facility, you know, groundbreaking, which will start next, next year. No, but the Education Resiliency Center is a facility on Fort Meade that took 11 years, 11-plus years from vision, which I had when I was in command, through five or six commanders maintaining the priority and resources, $5.1 million renovating a facility to take care of our service members, veterans, family, Department of Defense. When it comes to education and resiliency, resiliency defined as physical, emotional, spiritual, family, and social. And the idea there, and there's been a few articles about this, the idea there is that 44% of Fort Meade comes from Anaronda County, 25% from Howard County, but 8% and growing comes from Carroll County. That's just showing some of the facilities. It'll have a industrial, it has an industrial kitchen as well. There are kiosks to say where people can get the support needed. It's, it's a pretty special event. And it all started because of, well, not because I had the vision of establishing this, because there were suicides, there was drug addiction, there was family and social abuse, just a lot of tough times back in 2011 that we started creating this effort. And we finally did a ribbon cutting on Thursday. It was humbling to say the least and honoring in all regards. Life is good. It's a beautiful blue sky. It's 40 degrees. And I think we're all ready for Thanksgiving in a couple of days. So without further ado, no, I think we have one priority Carol, correct? Proclamation?
Yes, sir.
Then we'll get started.
Thank you very much. Commissioner, thanks for giving Senator Hester recognition for her participation in South Carroll. That was very nice of her to be active with our county. I have a proclamation here for the Partnership for a Healthier Carroll County 2022 Outstanding Rural Health Program Award winner. Whereas the Partnership for a Healthier Carroll County Incorporated, Carroll County Anti-Stigma Resiliency Efforts Care Program received a 2022 Outstanding Rural Health Program Award on October 24th, 2022, the Maryland Rural Health Association's annual meeting and awards ceremony. And the Rural Health Awards are part of the Rural Impact Awards, recognizing individuals and organizations and rural communities for outstanding development and health efforts. The Partnership for a Healthier Carroll County, an affiliate of Carroll County Hospital and the Carroll County Health Department, is a private nonprofit organization working to improve health by connecting people, inspiring action, and strengthening community. The Partnership for a Healthier Carroll County is a leader in healthy community strategies, working to promote healthy lifestyles, inspire leadership, track emerging health issues, influence policies that impact health, oversee community health assessments, and monitor health data to regularly check the pulse of the community. And CARE, established in September 2018, seeks to improve the lives of those struggling with mental health or substance abuse disorders or conditions by increasing knowledge, reducing discrimination, and removing barriers to treatment and recovery. The CARE program works to dispel myths, overcome stigma, and provide tools for communicating effectively about behavioral health to give awareness and understanding to those who need help. And the Board of Carroll County Commissioners is grateful to have the Partnership for a Healthier Carroll County in the community. We agree that stigma is the largest barrier to people seeking help for mental health and substance abuse disorders, and are especially thankful that the Partnership for a Healthier Carroll County Incorporated CARE program addresses this issue. Now therefore, we, the Board of Carroll County Commissioners, wish to recognize and congratulate the Partnership for a Healthier Carroll County, Inc., for receiving a 2022 Outstanding Rural Health Program Award, and thank them for the many supportive services offered to improve our overall health of Carroll County residents. Now we hereby proclaim Thursday, December 1st, 2022, as Partnership for a Healthier Carroll County Day, signed by the Commissioners. I can't thank all these people enough for what they do. So much of mental health and addiction is touching all of our lives. And then it was their partnership who has stepped up and helped deliver resources to citizens. I just gave a speech this week in Tawny Town to a local church that does a drug treatment program. And it's very touching to see the lives that are impacted by people with addiction and how they overcome the recovery. And that recovery comes from all of us caring about one another, and this is part of it. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and I think we'll have the opportunity to recognize it again next week, as that was December 1st, as far as the date, which is interesting. But.
Losing track of the days. But who's counting?
I have you on the schedule with the three of you, and you're obviously here. First and foremost. First and foremost, congratulations as being the woman or citizen of the year. Person? You're a whole lot more than that, and really appreciate that. It was a wonderful article and beautiful pictures as well. But I do have here the Historical Society Honorary Membership Induction. And if one of the three of you come on up and share with us.
It's wonderful to have you guys here today.
Well, thank you very much, Commissioners. And in that article in Carroll Magazine, I noted specifically that I feel that I represent every man because we have a community of folks who work very, very hard. And the things you've outlined, all kinds of activities going on involve so many volunteers and people that really work together. But I want to thank you for being the superstars and working so hard over the last four to eight years to do a fabulous job of managing our county through the most difficult period of COVID. There are always difficult things on your agenda, but that certainly was an additional heavy lift. And you have done a superb job for so many institutions, countless things that you have and the fantastic staff that have maintained Carroll County as a very effective, wonderful place to live. So we just wanted to come and thank you for your continued and sustained support of the Historical Society of Carroll County. You have a lot on your plate, and it has really meant a lot to us to have you support the Historical Society and come to Historical Society events. So right now, our Executive Director, Jason, is going to present to you honorary membership in the Historical Society of Carroll County. And we hope that you will be able to continue to join us for events and that we will continue to be in touch and with our heartfelt thanks.
Absolutely. Thank you. Please. Thank you.
And I like that. Also echo Lynn's remarks that the Historical Society is grateful for your support. And also the support the Commissioners have for history in general. They look at history as what really is the unique identifying characteristics of Carroll County. And the Board has recognized the significance of our Carroll County local history. And I think that's to be commended because the pathway forward is often looking at the what's behind us and got us to where we are today. And we do thank you for recognizing the significance, contributions of the Historical Society and your recognition of county history and how important it is to us as citizens to know our past.
Very well said, and thank you so much, Jason.
Yeah, I just want to say, some of you know that I was born in Westminster. And then life took me out of the county, and then happenstance, I'm back here in Carroll County. And I just, I'm sort of filled with wonder, and it's just amazing that I seem to be stumbling upon such a fortunate situation here. I have Lynn as our Board Chair. And then this, the Commissioners here that have been so supportive of not only the Historical Society but of me. And I know you guys just show up for everything for history, and I'm very appreciative of that. And I want to say that early next year, the Historical Society is going to be unveiling a strategic plan. And it's very exciting. I'm seeing it develop behind the scenes, and I think our community in the county is going to be really proud of what we share out with the community. So keep that on your radar. Thank you.
And happy Thanksgiving to all.
And have a very happy Thanksgiving. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And Lynn, we expect bigger things from you in the future.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, Judge Hecker, come on up and keep us straight.
Heck of a job.
It is a heck of a job.
Hey, good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
That's a perfect segue. You probably saw the article in last week's Sunday Carroll County Times. Kevin DeHauff's feature in the Life and Time section in the history of the historic courthouse in Carroll County and the laying of the cornerstone in 1838, so...
I tried never to read Kevin DeHauff stuff.
They had pictures.
I like his pictures.
You didn't have to read the text. You could get the whole story by looking at some of those beautiful old photographs. So, so good morning.
Justin Weaver was not in any of the pictures. I just wanted...
In 1838? Let the record reflect.
He was laying this stuff.
Actually, that was almost funny.
Let the record reflect, that was Mr. Burke's comment.
And seriously, that was almost funny.
Almost funny for me is as good as it gets.
Not bad. Seriously, not bad.
You're at the top of your game.
Well, good morning, and thanks for putting me at the top of the agenda this morning. I appreciate it. I'm asking for your approval this morning for the submission of a grant to the Administrative Office of the Courts. It's a security grant to improve security features in the courthouse, in the annex specifically. No funds are required from the county. This is a judiciary-funded grant in the amount of $8,631.04. I will tell you that that's based on current estimates, so if that figure is subject to change. And if it changes, I'll need to come back and ask for approval to submit a supplemental or amended grant. But this is part of an ongoing project to upgrade security features in the courthouse. And the details of that are contained in the briefing paper, so...
Thank you.
I'll move the Board of Commissioners approve the submission of the AY 2023 Courthouse Security Funding Request of $8,631.04 and accept the award.
Second. Got a motion, second, any discussion? Seeing here none in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much, Judge.
Thank you.
All right, I suppose this is the last time I'll appear before this board as presently constituted. So I want to thank each and every one of you for the working relationship that this board and the court has had to accomplish our common goals in the county. Each and every one of you has really shown your dedication and commitment to the importance of the judiciary and its functioning, and I appreciate that very much, so... And I wish you all well, those of you who are not remaining on in your future endeavors, so...
But you also wish someone that is remaining on well as well. I'm hoping.
Endolences and congratulations to you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you very much. I'm very grateful that you come here. You don't have to necessarily come in front of us, but I think it's very important for the public to see several branches of government coming together and working these things out. It's been an honor to work on this board and serve with you in this capacity, so thank you very much.
My pleasure. Thank you.
I'd like to just do this one more time.
Yes.
Judge, could you approach the bench? See, there's just something about that. I don't know. It's just, you know...
That may reverse on you in the future.
Need to say. You guys have a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you so much. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, sir.
Take care.
Mr. Burke? Your pilgrim tie on?
Okay, let's talk about the Board of Health and convene.
What you have to convene is the Board of Health.
Right, so let's convene as Board of Health. Do we adjourn in open session, convene Board of Health? So I need a motion to adjourn or recess?
Recession.
Make a motion to recess.
Second.
All in favor?
Make a motion to sit as the Board of Health. How's that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Now we are the Board of Health. Do you feel different?
I feel healthier.
Feel different.
I feel different. I don't know. Just something about it. The air cleared off. I don't know what it is.
I got Sue and Rob in front of me. I feel different. I feel good.
Thanks for having us today, Commissioners. I will be doing most of the talking. Sue's recovering from a head cold. I mean, I'm sure she'll chime in when she feels like...
I'm sure I don't want to hear, listen to this, and I'm not going to take my mask off. That's clearly not what we want. We don't want to hear anybody a cold before the holidays.
We have representatives from all our bureaus here, and we're going to move through these slides that are a summary of the annual report that I think you've got in front of you. So we're just going to give you some highlights from, about the health of Carroll County and the work that all the various bureaus are doing at the Carroll County Department of Health. So this is just a summary slide of our mission and values, a mission statement. Preserving, protecting, and promoting a healthy environment for the entire community. Summary slide for demographics and income, all of which you're well aware, I'm sure. Next slide. So this is the first important piece of information. So these are some of our health indicators and health risk factors and outcomes. The green ones are ones where we are doing better than the state in general. And the red ones are where we are lagging behind. And you can see, for example, Lyme disease, you know, we're a rural community. We've just got a lot of Lyme out there, so that's some, an issue where we are lagging behind the rest of the community. Tobacco use is another one, obesity. I'm sorry, tobacco, we're doing not as well, but obesity, we're doing pretty well compared to the state. And unfortunately, we have a higher suicide rate here in the county than statewide. Summary slide with chronic conditions. Again, how we're doing relative to the rest of the state. You can see on the bottom there hypertension and mental health are two areas where we are, have a bigger problem than the rest of the state.
There also are two areas that are prioritized by both the Health Department and the Hospital as to being addressed.
You can see top causes of mortality. COVID-19's creeping up, but still well behind heart disease and cancer. And these are just county deaths in 2020, so we, you know, these are the most recent summary statistics that we have.
That accident category, Doc, is that?
Automobiles, for the most part.
Okay.
Yeah, although there's probably others in there, but that's mostly...
That's just in general, if it's considered an accident?
Correct.
Of whatever type?
That's right.
Okay.
So our, these are now the summaries for each bureau. So we're going to get into, and then first of all, our budget. You can see most of our budget is, comes from grant funding, designated and categorical grants. And then the rest, the balance, comes from you all, the Carroll, the county government, and then the State of Maryland core funding, and then we have a smaller percentage that's paid services. So first up from the bureaus is the Prevention Wellness and Recovery Services. Kathy?
I'm going to start coughing and then it's great. Hi, everybody. I'll take my mask off. That's all right, just so you can hear me. So we are the Bureau of Prevention Wellness and Recovery, known in the Health Department that way. And we also house the local behavioral health authority, so we have direct oversight of most of the providers in the community that provide substance use or mental health services in the community. We are integrated. We have an integrated agreement with Access Carroll. I think most of you know we train the CIT officers in the county that are those specialized in mental health services for our community. We do community planning. We have harm reduction, substance use prevention, which I think, Dr., we presented Linda is retiring this year. I think most of you knew that, and that she will be replaced with Amy Legel for incoming. We house state care coordination, which is a special grant we get from the state to help those being released from detention or level 3.3 to 3.5 levels of care, which are the higher-end levels of care to help them get reintegrated with the community. We have had an eSmart grant, which was a SAMSA grant to do specialized services for children zero to eight. That grant has ended, but we are going to continue doing services with CCYSB, who was our partner in that grant. So we have a little bit of funding, and we've also applied for another specialized grant to help those children, so... We house peer recovery support services. Our PATH, which is the projects for assistance for transitioning from homelessness. So we try to help people that, you know, want to get out of homelessness into apartments and those kinds of things. Maryland Community Criminal Justice Treatment Program is a specialized service in the detention center for those that have serious and persistent mental illness. We do reentry programming with the detention center. And our lead with Westminster PD is that law enforcement diversion, which is a diversion effort prior to arrest. So we have case management that helping individuals prior to the officer arresting. At any time during that work, they can arrest the individual if things progress to that level. We have a suicide prevention coalition. We do school screenings for substance use. And we have our quick response team that we partner with Westminster PD to do direct dispatch for overdoses in Westminster City Limits with, to appear in a case manager. And our Start Family Mentor, which is specialized with DHS. We have a peer over there working with moms that are usually addicted to some substance, whether it's alcohol or opiates. So, and I think the next screen is our... Mobile Crisis Team, which the county does put $130,000 into, provided 804 new cases this past year and 142 face-to-face follow-ups for that stabilization of those individuals, and completed 115 safety plans. The team operates 16 hours a day. There's the numbers for our specialized services for those children zero to eight. Our CIT officers intervened with, or trained 21 officers and included eight student resource officers this year. Law enforcement diversion resulted in two new arrests for diversion and six referrals. CIT completed 185 behavioral health referrals. Those behavioral health referrals come directly to the Health Department. One of our social worker reaches out to those individuals to get them connected to service if they're not already connected. And 12 of the individuals and two families were helped with housing through the Continuum of Care Grant. And then just to spotlight our suicide numbers, as Dr. Wack referenced, the numbers are high. 524 people went to the ED for attempted suicide or self-intentional harm. Some of those referrals were done by mobile crisis. And as you can see, the numbers are greater for females. Both genders are white, and those that are under 18 is 32.6%, which is very concerning to us. And then our 18 to 29-year-olds are 27.3, and then on up. We also have some seniors in that mix at 3.6 for those over 65.
You, I apologize, stand this slide for a second, but first, Sue, did you need water?
I think I'm good.
Okay, well, I mean, probably just get you a bottle of water.
I'm distressed, right?
I'm sorry. I'm used to her...
I try to stop coughing.
No, no, that's okay. But staying on this slide, the cause and effects, you know, it was brought to, you know, our attention along with, you know, Dr. Wack about cause and effects of COVID-19 and saying that we, as a government and a county, did not have the successful, you know, prevention that we were looking to have when it came to the rules and, you know, adjustments necessary to prevent, you know, the spread of COVID and other, you know, activities associated with COVID. I mean, what are your thoughts about this? I mean, is this due to COVID? Is this, I mean, should we, like, have not done the things we did, or what are your, what are your thoughts?
So a connection between these mental health challenges we're having and COVID?
Yeah, and then also, you know, I don't know if you're going to get into the activities that we did because we need to learn the lessons, whether we did what was right or should we have changed?
I just want to reiterate that prior to COVID, we had been here talking about how concerned we were about the suicide numbers, especially the under-18 population. We actually had the highest number of attempted suicides and successful suicides in that group, age group in the state. And we started to look at that and started to put some things in place. One of the things that we believed attributed to that was that our schools put in place the, and I'm going to blank on it.
The SOROs?
No, the Sources of Strength Programming, which then trained not just the teachers, but, you know, the custodians, the lunch ladies, and so that they overheard somebody saying something. So one of the things we learned from that... So one of the things we learned from that, when I worked with the Behavioral Health Task Force with the schools, was that sometimes we reacted too quickly to what somebody said, like, oh, I just failed that test, my parents are going to kill me, I might as well just go home and, you know, take some pills or whatever. And people would react to that. And that is not, in hindsight, a bad thing, that we're reacting to it. But when we looked at how many interventions the school system was doing, it was 10 times what any other school system was doing, because they were trained to listen for these cues, and they were hearing them. And it's better to check with somebody that doesn't have a plan and really isn't looking to do harm to themselves than is to not check with them and then have something happen.
So Commissioner, to follow up on the rest of your questions. So as Ms. Doyle correctly points out, we've always had a mental health and suicide problem in this county, long before COVID. So there's that. So that, that's a very strong piece of evidence that the interventions that the county tried to implement probably had zero impact on that problem. But the other equally compelling point against that is that our county, despite your efforts, didn't have as strict of restrictions as many other counties around the area.
Right.
And in fact, there are people who actively worked against those restrictions and-
Right.
-almost certainly made our COVID experience worse because of that. And so that would argue that it's in fact the opposite, that, that if there was any relationship to, between COVID interventions and our mental health problems, that the lack of interventions may have made it worse, rather than the interventions themselves making it worse.
Lack of intervention may have made it worse. It's just, I appreciate, because, you know, sometimes it's easy to find a scapegoat, you know, and say, this is why. And it's not true, you know? There, there's a lot of things out there about all of these doctors being, you know, not real, like Dr. Fauci and the CDC, and everybody knows better than all of these or NIH. I'm like, these are really brilliant people, you know? And we use it as a scapegoat. It's not that I blindly follow, but I'm pretty amazed at the level of NIH and CDC and the others that look out for us, and to try to implement the right, you know, responsible approaches that we do. So for people to say that, for all of our efforts in overseeing this, we actually caused more, I, I want to learn more from that, because, you know, knock on wood, we're never going to have another pandemic. But I want to be prepared the best we can. And to say, oh, just do nothing, because everything you did, did absolutely nothing to prevent. I'm like, well, is that true or not?
It's not.
It's not. And it's very clear, it's not. So anybody who says it is, you know, needs to understand, it's not. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, I think the data prior to COVID pandemic will show that suicide's been on the rise in this community.
Yeah, I can remember sitting here in 2015, when I first took office, or one of the first years in office, looking at these statistics. And we asked then, what's going on? Because they were, they were high. And that was in 2015.
Yeah.
There's a lot of stigma in the community about, you know, seek, reaching out for, you know, behavioral health services, whether it's substance use or it's mental health. People, you know, don't want to look frowned upon, you have special, you know, depending on where you're employed, some of that gets impacted, those kinds of things. So I think some of that is, you know, until we break through the stigma, and we did do an anti-stigma campaign with the partnership, putting signs out to really kind of break through that communication and have conversation about, just like Sue said, if somebody's feeling down, have a conversation with them, don't walk over it, you know?
Yeah, taking our time talking about this, to me, is very important. I, I was interviewed a few times as we were getting ready to build a Resiliency Center on Fort Meade. And one of them was just that, silencing the stigma. And in my own challenges with demons, doing the right thing. Because it all started from multiple suicides that occurred, and I couldn't figure out how to stop them. And it wasn't on me to stop, but I was like, okay, let's build a plan. And that's where we built this resiliency program to help silence the stigma. The cause of the pandemic was so great, that again, people were looking at that as a scapegoat, saying, oh, we overreacted and therefore we caused more. Or, you know, if we would have left it alone, nobody would have died, and all this kind of stuff. And people don't remember, the hospitals were overfilled, elective surgeries didn't occur, cancer was not being diagnosed appropriately, and people were being stuck in emergency rooms. And you don't get better in an emergency room, you know, and-
Well, and I could also point out that it's not over. There are about 3,000 Americans a day die from COVID still. So this, this is not, we're not finished.
Right.
That takes a toll.
Yeah. No, I, I really appreciate it, because I don't like when people trash other people as a scapegoat, so, okay.
And along with those death, then becomes the grief from the loss, and, you know, those kinds of things are impacted with families.
Right.
You know, I lost my mom due to COVID, so I get it. You know, it's just one of those things that you gotta look at, get help for, and talk through it, you know, and not put your head in the sand and just think it's going to go away, because it doesn't-
Absolutely right. My dad passed a few months ago, again, with COVID, is the number one reason, so, okay.
If I may, I reiterate what you said, the loss of a loved one affects one's own personal mental health as well. Having lost a daughter, I understand very much. My concern is about the 32.6% of suicides under 18. Has that figure ever, ever been that high in our community before?
Well, I can't answer that without going back and looking at the data, but I can tell you, the numbers are increasing.
They're scary-looking numbers.
And even, you know, along with our adolescent overdoses, they're increasing as well, which is concerning. So we're trying to do some efforts around that as well, so we'll have more information to bring back.
We all know that there's a direct link between the mental health, the addiction, and the suicide. I know personally, in my experiences, my biggest concern about this number is going forward, what that means for us dealing with these juveniles turning into adults with suicide and addiction. It's going to be very hard to pull that back in. And whatever resources we, as a local government, can give you to help with that, you are the professionals addressing this. I hope that as the next board comes in, they maintain this interest and help. I believe Dr. Wack is a pediatrician. You're on the front line, you see this on a daily basis, and I think we're very fortunate to have you in your position to help address this. And as I move on to other positions, I'll do what I can at the state level to try to secure some resources for us, because this, these are horrible numbers, and I'm fearful for our children in the future. And I'm very grateful for all of yous and the staff being on top of this. So thank you very much for what you're doing.
Thank you.
And I just want to thank the board, too, for all the support you've given us as the Behavioral Health Unit with Mobile Crisis and other services, and showing up at our events and things like that. So I do want to thank you. And best wishes in your future endeavors, whatever they may be.
Again, the linkage started between COVID and this, and there is none that we should, I mean, it, it happened. Suicides and mental illness occurs, and it's not a direct linkage in adolescent or children with COVID. And what we did were, I won't say the best decisions, were decisions made, you know, to deal with this. And I, you know, honestly, I just can't sit idly when people trash other people, saying, you did wrong because of this.
I think this board did the best it could, given the situation and the latitude you had to act, and that what you did helped. It didn't make anything worse, it helped.
Thank you.
But was it enough?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, you can ask that question of the entire country. And, and did COVID have other consequences, other than people getting sick and dying from COVID? Absolutely. You know, but COVID is not to blame for our longstanding, pre-existing mental health challenges in this community.
Correct. Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Just real quickly, Prevention Services served 6,096 students and 4,347 community members. So Prevention is reaching out to those young individuals constantly about, we have Amy Legels in the schools regularly, teaching about the disease of addiction and those kinds of things. Peer services, you can see the numbers there, and I did go over the CIT, and we provided 1,856 doses of naloxone were distributed this year or so. So are any questions, any of the numbers? I know it's just a lot of numbers, and just to kind of show you that we are working diligently in the community.
Yeah.
Yeah, that QRT team-
The Quick Response Team?
They're only in the city?
They're only in Westminster City. We have a pilot with them right now. The goal is to expand that, if there's interest to the other jurisdictions.
I would hope there'd be interest.
Yeah, you would think they would.
Forward-thinking leadership there in the city of Westminster.
Yeah. Westminster has the highest number of overdoses in the community, secondly followed by Tawnytown.
I'm sorry, would you like to repeat that, Dr. Wack? No, I appreciate that, but I think it should, I, I hope that it, in the future, and I know that Chief Robinson's been, been looking at some of those, those things as well, to try to get out there. So-
Yes.
Your BH, your BH1 units or whatever, they're-
Mobile crisis units?
Yeah, they're-
BH1 and BH2?
Yeah, they're-
Yes.
They're running county-wide.
Yes, they are running, and the numbers show it, that they're out there.
Okay, I just, sometimes folks get those too confused, but I just want folks to note that BH units are on the road county-wide.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And their number's readily available on our website if anybody needs any services. They can also just reach out to our Behavioral Health Unit, and we'll get them connected to services, so.
There is lots of new money pouring into crisis services, to, to your point, suicide rates and, and people needing services. My concern there is, it's probably around 25 million almost, but my concern there is that we have regional crisis centers, and we know that in the western area, the county regional centers don't work that well, even if you put it in the furthest point of, you know, closest to us of Washington County, for five counties, it's not going to be as effective, so. And we will continue to advocate for that to be more county-wide.
Yeah, and I would also add that we got, recently got numbers from the sheriff's office about their overnight calls for behavioral health calls, and the numbers were high. So we are looking at potentially applying for a grant to have a third team for BH, to make it 24/7. So that's on the plate for our work to be done this year, so.
That's a great program, so.
Yeah, yes.
And it helps the first responders when they hear BH1 call out on the air, because they know they got the Calveries coming across the ridge.
Yep.
So that's good.
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
All right, we're going to let me try this one. Bureau of Administration Services, this is the services that we do countywide, are vital records, so that's birth and death certificates. Interpreter Services, non-emergency medical assistance, transportation, which over the next two years is scheduled to change. It will be a statewide contract. I, I don't have any other information on that, other than they're moving to a statewide contractor for that services, and they're putting them into an administrative services organization where the units will bill for the, the service that they provide, so they'll bill Medicaid for that service. We do health planning, communication on our social media, prepare grants, public health preparedness and response, and support services such as administrative support, budget and fiscal, human resources, information technology and operations. We are totally 100% up and running short of our wireless Wi-Fi that we had for the public. So apparently, there's some supply chain demands that are causing some issues with getting products that we need. That's my understanding. And then you have the numbers of what we provided this year in death and birth certificates.
So next up is our Bureau of Nursing, and Tierney Yangeling, our Director of Nursing, is here, but she also is fighting a head cold. So I'm going to blow through these.
You all need to open the doors up there. Come on, what's going on up there?
Wear masks. So, and I'm not going to do these justice. They, our Nursing Bureau does an enormous amount of work, and I'm just going to hit some highlights here on these slides. Our Administrative Care Coordination Unit helps residents get connected with resources throughout the community. The ARES Program, Adult Evaluation Review Services, is for elderly folks who may need additional support services. We have a breast and cervical cancer screening program, the cigarette restitution fund program that handles all our anti-smoking and tobacco cessation programs. Our Communicable Disease Program, which as you can imagine, has been very busy. And then our Epidemiology, which handles our contact tracing, as well as does a lot of the data collection and sharing that you've seen in these reports.
Yeah, cigarette restitution, does that also deal with vaping?
Yes. I, I don't know if we have a specific program around vaping, but vaping is included in nicotine products generally.
I'm just not very familiar with vaping, but that is nicotine, right?
Well, it can be, but there are all other, that's the problem with vaping, is it's sort of in this gray area. It's, the vaping is really only the vehicle for delivering whatever you want.
Okay.
There's kids out there vaping THC, there's kids out there vaping anything they can get their hands on. And, but nicotine is sort of the gateway substance that, that gets them into it.
So these vape stores, that's the, the tool they use to ingest whatever?
Yeah, and many of them are flavored, so they, you know, they taste like bubble gum, they taste like candy, of different, you know, it's, it's bad. And I, I have friends of the family who, as young, young adults, I mean, we're talking teens and into early twenties, who have already realized, this is taking control of my life. And it's just nicotine, because it's so, it's such an effective delivery vehicle, and it's discreet, it doesn't have the same social stigma as smoking a cigarette. So it's, it's a real challenge.
So the nicotine fix is faster with vaping than it is with cigarettes or other?
Uh, I don't know if there's solid data on that, but anecdotally, it stands to reason. It's, because it's smaller particles, they go deeper into your lung, you don't have the, all the irritating other chemicals that are in cigarette smoke, so it's not as an unpleasant an experience for the inexperienced smoker. So it's a real easy way for kids, anybody, to get hooked on nicotine fast.
Many parents don't see it as an issue.
I apologize, you?
Parents do not see it as an issue.
Yeah, it just doesn't have the stigma yet.
It doesn't have the tar, it's not creating-
Doesn't stink.
Oh, no, what it's doing.
It's not as dirty a habit as, as cigarette smoking.
Yeah. Okay.
And sadly, it was initially presented as the safer-
Yeah.
Alternative.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
And it's like, wait, what? I mean, anytime you're, of course, as a firefighter, I, I know ingesting things in your lungs is, you know, I've been doing that since 1982.
Except for oxygen.
Yeah, right, except for that.
And only at 20%.
There's really no, I try to tell folks, when it started, you really think that's a safer alternative?
Yeah.
Putting anything in there is not safe, so, I don't know.
Okay.
Anyway.
I, I appreciate that.
As well, this is a challenge for our school system as well.
Absolutely.
It brought to my attention, yeah, students will run into the bathroom, they could be smoking THC with their vapes in the bathroom.
I've heard stories of them doing it discreetly in class, that, that it's, they're able to, you know, just hold this thing in their hand and go like this, and-
Don't worry about the pillar of smoke that comes out.
Well, so some of them don't produce a visible cloud.
Oh, really?
Yeah. It's, yeah.
Yeah, it's interesting.
Okay.
There's, there's a lot to learn, Commissioner. We're here for you.
Get into the cheap seats where I sit, not where you sit.
He's had a sheltered childhood. Maybe I just don't know.
It's new. It's, it's new, and it's changing fast. And it's changing faster than, you know, for example, the school system, they can't keep up with, with all the ways kids have learned to circumvent any kind of controls on this.
Yeah, we don't vape in the suites, maybe down there.
Well, I had, I was going to say, I had a, I had a dude get taken out of there on Sunday as a result of somebody-
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, they're not allowed to vape in the stadium?
You can't, you can't do it in the stadium. They got, reminder of when I went to school, remember when we went to school, you used to, if you wanted to smoke, you smoked out, first you smoked in the bathroom, and then they, then they had it out on the porch, and, you know, the smoking areas, but they do that at M&amp;T, too. But, you know, these dudes are vaping in their seats, and a lot of people are getting ticked off about that.
Yeah.
So, yeah, one dude got taken out of there on Sunday, so.
Wow, okay.
Of course, he was probably warmer in the end than I was, but whatever. But we won.
Continuing on with nursing programs, we have our fetal and infant and child mortality review. This is a state-mandated program where any infant or child death in the county is reviewed by a team, and looking for ways to prevent similar tragedies going forward. M-Chip and Medical Assistance, we help connect residents with insurance programs that they may be eligible for. Our Maternal Child Health Program runs all our childhood vaccination clinics, vision and hearing programs in the school, the Best Beginnings, which is a prenatal care program, and the Infants and Toddlers Program, which does early intervention services for children with, who may have- The Best Beginnings, which is a prenatal care program, and the Infants and Toddlers Program, which does early intervention services for children with, who may have special needs. Our oral health programs around our dental clinic are booming. And then our reproductive health clinic for family planning services and sexually transmitted diseases for those who need them in the community. You can see here a lot of numbers with the volume of work that we do. I'm not gonna go through the whole thing, but you can see thousands and thousands and thousands of encounters providing health services to the citizens of Carroll County. Next up is Bureau of Environmental Health Services.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm gonna scoot Lisa. Lisa Staley is my deputy, just in case she has something to add. I think you're all familiar with that program, but I'm gonna go through each section and give you some highlights. I'm gonna start with our community hygiene program. There are food people. They're responsible for our food inspections. We have approximately 700 food service facilities in the county. Not only do we do food inspections, we do plan reviews for new facilities coming into the county. And we also work jointly with our nursing bureau when we have foodborne outbreaks, and we do have foodborne outbreaks in the county. Luckily, we don't have many, but we do have some. I know, shouldn't have said that. We also are responsible in this section for air quality. In the last couple of years, we brought the burning program back to the health department. Our burning program is based on complaints generated, and we work with the fire departments. Most of the calls we get on the weekends, and these are people that do not have burning permits. So they have to put the fire out and go through the appropriate process to apply for a burning permit.
Insert burn barrels here.
We don't talk burn barrels in Carroll County.
You're probably really gonna be upset when I don't call you anymore, Andrea.
I will. I really will. You can still call me.
Okay, thank you.
We're also responsible, we do camp inspections annually, school health and safety inspections annually. And we do have a, state has a tanning program. It's a complaint-generated program. I think we've gotten one complaint probably in the last 10 years. Anything you would like to add to that?
No, I don't think so.
So I'm gonna move on to our well and septic program. That program is actually named New Construction. They are responsible for issuing permits for failing systems. So they do the PERC test and do the inspection after the system's been installed. And they handle a lot of complaints, overflowing sewage, those types of things. We have our development review section. They're our raw land group. They're doing the plan reviews and the percolation tests for our large subdivisions that are coming into the county. They also, at this point, are handling any visits for a building permit. If we need someone to go out and take a look at something before we will sign off on the building permit, they're doing that right now. We have our water quality section. They're responsible for testing water. We still do some limited services. But there's a lot of companies available that are state-certified, and we refer them to them because a lot of times it's a lot faster and it is a lot cheaper. But there are programs that we are responsible for, and those are community programs through the state. We also handle the pool inspections, and they are responsible for any sewage flows that might trickle into a stream or near a body of water. We work jointly with MDE as far as posting and sampling.
They're also responsible for any stagnant water complaints that we would have over the summertime, spring, summer, early fall, generally when they come through.
That could lead to a mosquito issue. We have our rabies prevention program. We always say that that is the most important program that we handle in environmental health, because that's a life, life or death program. We also work jointly with our nursing team. We handle the animal end, nursing handles the human end. But we're usually the one on the front line receiving the telephone calls from the hospitals and the doctors and the urgent care facilities so that we can coordinate with not only our nursing team, but the state as far as testing and any type of vaccinations that need to be.
If I may interrupt, thanks for mentioning rabies. I think it's something that's been overlooked. What is the track record of it coming in? Is it like your pet gets bit, or is it contact with a wild animal? Do hunters get it?
It's all of it. It's all of it, yes.
I was wondering how people can try to prevent it or avoid it. Is there any advice, signs to look for?
They need to have their pets vaccinated, and that is the way to, that is the way to prevent it. Now, I'm not gonna say that if, you know, if your dog gets in a fight with a raccoon, we're still gonna put it in quarantine for 45 days. The dog gets boosted again, but that's better than having to euthanize the pet or to have it, put it in a quarantine for six months, okay? And that's what it used to be. So prevention is.
And there's saying about that, like an ounce of prevention or something like that?
There you go. I mean, that's the most, and Dr. Whack might wanna say something.
Yeah, there's a couple of other simple things. Never handle a bat, ever.
No problem with that.
And if you see a nighttime animal during the day, stay away from it, especially if it's acting weird. And a rabid animal is super obvious, you know, it's, it's an animal that doesn't show any fear, and they're generally kind of staggering around like they're drunk.
I will, if I may, I will state from my experience as a hunter, I walked into the woods one time, and during the middle of the day, I seen a raccoon stumbling around, and I immediately knew.
It was a rabid raccoon.
Yes, I avoided it, and from a distance I watched, and I watched it try to crawl trees, it fell off the trees. Two weeks later, I went back out hunting, and he was in that same spot, he'd finally died, so I totally avoided him. I advise all other hunters, stay the heck away from them.
Exactly.
And this is why we provide, currently we're doing it twice a year, our rabies vaccination clinic for the county. It's a low-cost clinic that we have at the Ag Center. We have it in the fall, and then we have it in the spring. And people can bring their pets, and I mean, a lot of people bring their barn cats, and there might be 25 barn cats that these people bring.
Oh, they do.
They do, and we're glad that they do. So that we can have these animals vaccinated, and we also have a lot of facilities in the county that have moved into the county, I don't wanna say by name, that provide these vaccinations also every weekend at low cost, so.
So we should stop using herding cats because apparently somebody's doing it?
You don't wanna hurt, well.
I guess farmers have a much broader exposure because possums and raccoons get in their barns, they get to the food.
Absolutely.
Light their cats.
And, you know, we've quarantined cows, we've quarantined horses, so, you know, they do get exposed as well.
Quarantine Commissioners?
So the last section that we have under environmental health is our health education section. And they're responsible for a lot of things, but car seat checks, injury prevention, chronic disease prevention, and they do a lot of outreach, not just for the health department, but for health education in general.
Are you still doing the train-the-trainer kind of program for the car seat thing or not?
Yes.
Okay. So you don't, we've had folks call the fire station, and I think we have our guys still there. But anyway, you know, referring them to the health department, it's easier if you have several out in the, wherever.
And as you know, things kind of slowed down a little during COVID. We weren't doing, but they're really amping back up and providing full service, so.
Okay, good, all right.
Thank you. Moving on, this is just some summary data about our COVID services over the last fiscal year. See, thousands and thousands of vaccines and tests administered, lot of contact tracing efforts, you know, over 100 outbreaks at long-term care facilities, child, you know, 22 childcare, in childcare facilities, and then the schools. We are continuing to report our data to the state as required, and the state in turn puts out summary data that I think you guys all see that or have access to that. So on our current dealings with respiratory viruses, Carroll County is being hammered by these, the same as everywhere else in the state and in the country. The big ones are, in addition to COVID, influenza is huge, the southeast right now is, is being torn up by influenza. RSV, and then there are also the rhinoviruses, the respiratory enteroviruses, it's just a big stew of viruses.
Is RSV really exploding this year? I've heard so much more about that than I have in the past.
So it is exploding, but it is not exploding in a way that's different than other years where it has exploded. It's just gotten a lot of attention. The media is sort of hypersensitized to respiratory viruses now, so, and it's just made for a sexy, scary story to talk about, ooh, you know, but RSV has. I'm sorry?
Sells papers.
Sells papers. RSV's been around my entire medical career. We've been dealing with RSV, bad RSV outbreaks. You know, every, like, every three to five, 10 years, they come, they make kids, especially small kids, premature kids terribly sick, but they also make adults sick, especially if you have asthma or you're an otherwise vulnerable elderly person. And so what's, what's a little different about this year is that we're getting hit with the flu and RSV, and we're still dealing with COVID. And it's just a confluence of a lot of bad stuff at the same time.
Is there any, are there vaccinations for RSV?
No, unfortunately not. So that's been something, again, my entire medical career, that they've been working on. You know, this just gets into the complexities of vaccine development and the unique attributes of these different viruses and how they interact with your body and the immune system. RSV is just a difficult bug to develop an effective vaccine for. They've been trying for decades. And there have been other treatments that have kind of come and gone, and, you know, but it's still a scourge. And we don't have any super effective vaccines for it. I'm sorry, there is a vaccine for premature babies that they, that they use that is effective enough that it helps protect the premature babies, but there isn't a widespread childhood immunization for RSV yet. Oh, yeah, so our partners at Carroll Hospital are getting slammed with this stuff. And on top of, there are already existing capacity issues and staffing issues. So we've been working with them to try to get messaging out about appropriate use of hospital resources, when it's appropriate to go to the emergency room, when it's not, that sort of thing. How to use urgent care more effectively, that sort of thing. And then just some other community health updates about COVID, the flu, monkeypox. Thankfully, it seems to have, it's not gone yet, but it's, doesn't seem to be that it's gonna turn out to be a big problem. Our medical assistance program, we're about to, we're, no, we're into open enrollment through January. And the Medicaid renewals will have been extended through January 31st of next year. Our mobile unit will be coming online soon. This is our new mobile clinic that we're hoping to use a lot, once we have it up and, up and running. And hoping to, you know, push services, and we're gonna, looking at collaborating with the hospital to do this, push the, push services out into parts of the county where there's some need. Andrea, you wanna come back and talk about this, or you want me to do it?
I can try to do it.
Or Sue, you wanna do it? Go for it.
So continued to have staffing challenges in the environmental health bureau. I believe we've talked about this a number of times with you. We have five open positions within the bureau right now. Two are supervisory and three are field staff. We had two additional staff leave. We have managed to hire a few with, with challenges. So I'm gonna do this out of order. We had 100 people on the list, we sent 97 emails out, we had seven people respond for the positions of those. We selected four to be hired. They all requested salaries above base, so base salary, I believe, is 34,000?
Forty, for training, it's like 45, 46.
Between 48,000 and 65,000. Two of the candidates selected were determined not to be eligible and unable to achieve a certificate of eligibility from the Board of Environmental Health. So there's a more complicated process for the hiring of these individuals. This is not unique to Carroll County. This is a statewide issue. In some other counties, I believe, Commissioner Rothschild received, Rothstein, I'm sorry. Blame it on the congested head. I am sorry.
I'm blaming it on the mask, it's all good.
And you're staying.
They received all the, either elected officials, the heads of the commissioners, received a letter stating that they had some proposals in the works which include, and I can't remember the name of what they're calling them.
Circuit riders.
Circuit riders, that's what they're calling them, which are, they have contracted with companies who do not have the training that the people we're trying to hire would need, who do not have the education that the people that we're trying to hire need. And the expectation is that we, our staff would train them, and then that the county or the health department would pay, then pay them $150 to $200 an hour to do the work of these individuals that we can't find positions for. We did not, in Carroll County, mark ourselves as critical. We believed that we could at least get the baseline of job that needed to be done, done, and then prioritize those things that come up and bubble up to the surface. And we felt that that was the right decision because we did not wanna put ourselves in a place that we were hiring people that were unskilled, unqualified, uneducated, and asking our staff to then provide their training, and then they get paid five times what our staff are being paid. That is not gonna happen. So we're going to look for other alternatives. So we were able to hire two, three, three total, right?
We hired two from the state list. They weren't from the same list. We've pulled the list two times. And we were able to hire one gentleman from Kelly Professional Services. I'm not sure how many we will be able to hire that way because there's a tremendous cost associated with that type of hire.
Right.
We do have a gentleman that is working on contract with us. We're very thankful. He's working weekends, and he's coming in and covering some vacations for our staff. We've had him about six months, and we're, like I said, we're very thankful. He used to work for us. He just works for our home rule county, which allows him to work for the state. There's no ethical issue, so. He's been very helpful.
And I believe Harford County helped us out.
So we, yes, that, that was a wonderful opportunity. I contacted the director from Harford County, and I need you to realize that we lost our food supervisor, and we have three trainees in the food program. So with that in mind, we have three staff with not a lot of experience. So I contacted the director in Harford County, and I was able to send two of those staff there, two to three days a week for eight weeks. They came back fully trained. Lisa has already let one loose, and we're going to do some follow-up training next week, and hopefully that one will be out on the field, out in the field, so. It's been a struggle.
So we are continuing to recruit for the field supervisor for, for.
So the positions that we currently have open are, we have two supervisors, the food supervisor position. We have the new construction position. We have, two people are needed in new construction. And actually, one person is needed in new construction and two people in development review. And I also left, lost my other deputy director. So these are all for retirements. We've had people move out of state, and we've had people go mainly to private industry or to state service at, you know, a higher level.
This issue's being worked on on multiple levels, with the state, with MDE, and with us, so we're doing our best to problem solve as we go and look for other opportunities. You know, again, I'll repeat the challenges that we have being in Carroll County. Baltimore County and Howard County are home rule counties, and they use a different hiring scale. Baltimore County will not hire trainees, which makes us the training ground for Baltimore County. So people will come here, get hired as a trainee, get their training, and then move on to a job that'll pay them $20,000 more. In addition to that, Frederick County's now working on a stipend, which they will be offering starting in FY '24. Howard County already offers a stipend, and Harford County, so most of the larger counties either offer more money as starting salaries because they're home rule, or they offer stipends from the county to supplement the salary so that they can get skilled individuals in. So, that's where we're at with that, and that concludes our presentation, unless you have questions on anything we did.
No, I think it was very thorough, and really appreciate all the work, and wishing all of you get healthier as time moves on.
I hope you so too.
Because I know it's got to be very frustrating, but no, I think, you know, you're setting the stage for the 62nd Board to come in, to have the ability to listen and learn for what you have shared, and I'm looking forward to that as well, because it is a plethora, I think is the right word, of information and departments and division, I mean, that's a word I typically don't use a lot. So, but thank you. Any comments?
No, thank you for the last eight years. We've seen faces, some of the faces have changed, some of them have been here and have listened to me, asked a lot of questions. Looking at you, but I, you know, you always come up with, sometimes we didn't agree, but you always came up with answers, and we worked through those situations, so I appreciate all of you and what you've done. Sue, you were a great addition as you stepped in, and Dr. Whack, what can we say about you? I mean, you've come on board and done a great job.
Lots of things.
Yeah, I'm not going to...
Most bad.
Let me just leave it there, leave it at that, but thank you all very much for all the hard work that you do up there. Folks don't realize how much gets accomplished up there on the Hill, and it's very important that they see this, and I hope the outreach continues, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to say thank you as well for everything that you've done, especially through COVID. It was, having gone through that before, and to help, the communication back and forth really was outstanding, and I really appreciate it, thank you very much.
Stepped up.
Yeah, it was tough.
I will add, there's a little bit of irony, health department's sick, but I think back to when I had small children, my coworker's like, "Why are you always sick? You're not healthy." I was like, "I have little children." Like, whatever the latest strain is, they brought home to me. So I appreciate all the sacrifice you all made, you dealt with a lot of mental stress over the COVID policies, physical stress as being sick, and I'm looking forward to moving forward and helping y'all in any way possible to address the situations we're faced with. Regardless of how we wound up here, the fact is, we are here, and I have a very grave concern about our children as well you do, and I'm looking forward to meeting with y'all in the future and helping in any way possible to address these issues, because you're the experts on it. I'm just a facilitator, if you have a policy or a need, come to me, brief me, and I can try to sell it. Because for me, seeing those numbers of suicide so level, so high of a level for juveniles is very, very concerning for me, and I want to do everything I can to help you. I've lost a stepson to suicide, I've lost a daughter to opioids, and I know how devastating this is personally to me, and I know how devastating it is out there, everyone out there in the public dealing with this, this is a national crisis, and you all on our front line helping us, bless you.
Thank you.
Hey, I'm going to email you my personal cell, Andrea, just so, just so when you see it come up, you go, "Nope."
It's already in my phone.
Auto delete.
Thank you, guys, and stay healthy.
Dr. Whack offered us an out, and I told him I felt like I needed to be here for the Board of Health meeting.
Defying doctor's orders.
You're a good nurse.
That's right.
I need a motion to adjourn the Board of Health.
Adjourn this Board of Health.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. I need a motion to resume our open session.
I don't want to do that.
Did you do it?
Wait, did anybody do it?
No, he said no.
Oh.
Somebody else.
I need a motion to open.
I, maybe we open.
Okay. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks Weaver.
Okay. Let's move on to item number three, FY '22 Audit and Annual Comprehensive Financial Report.
Thank you, I think.
This sounds really exciting.
Yeah, it is exciting.
Maybe for you.
Okay. Ms. Hobbs?
What I live for.
Live and breathe this.
We have to review this, read it before you give it, right?
Speed read.
Prepare, read.
This is on you, go for it.
All right, good morning, Commissioners. With me, joining me today is Mr. Dan Kenny, he's from our audit firm, Cohen Resnick, and he will be addressing the board on the annual audit results for FY '22. So as we annually come before you with the results, this year we'll be providing you the FY '22 county results, as well as releasing the county financial statements, now known as the ACFR, Annual Financial Report, Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. The audit financial statement is required by the state law, and we use these documents to meet requirements that are required by the federal and state government, as well as granting agencies and other agencies, as well as bond markets and disclosures to meet the county requirements. This report contains our single audit, which is the audit of our grant money, so that's in here, federal grant money, by the way. FY '22 was another substantial year, as we're finishing with the CRF funds, we're ramping up on the ARPA funds, and other grants have increased as a result of COVID funding. We're very pleased to say that we received an unmodified opinion, which is our goal, means we have a clean audit, and there are financial, these financial numbers are what the rating agencies use as their baselines to look at that, to give us our triple A rating. Following your acceptance of any, and any comments on this, we will be posting these and releasing these to the public online later on today. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kenny.
Mr., congratulations on the hard work and appreciation for this, as it took quite some time.
Thank you.
As we all know, but really do appreciate your leadership and your teams in preparing this, so, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Jenny. Good morning, Commissioners, I'm Dan Kenny, partner with Cohen Resnick, here to present the June 30, 2022 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for Carroll County. This morning, we're going to go through the independent auditors' report, the internal control letter, the compliance letter with respect to the federal programs, the management letter, and then the those charged with governance. So the first item is the independent auditors' report. I want to let you know that there's a new auditing standard out there, SAS number 134, which talks about reporting, so if you were to take this opinion and compare it to last year, the format has changed, however, the scope of our work did not change at all. So let me point out some of the differences in the report. If you look now, the report indicates that the opinions is in the front of the report, and there's also clarifying language with respect to management's responsibility and auditor's responsibility. As Ms. Hobbs mentioned, you have received an unmodified opinion. In our opinion, the financial statements are fairly presented for the year ending June 30, 2022 for Carroll County. The basis for our opinions, we conduct our audit in accordance with government auditing standards and generally accepted auditing standards, and if you look under page 16 on the independent auditors' report, it talks about the five areas where we look at, and that's noted in the bullet points there. It also discusses the required supplementary information with respect to the MDA, pension, and the OPEB. If you go to page 17, paragraph discusses the supplementary information within your ACFR, and then, because you have received federal funding, we also issue a report on internal control over financial reporting, and that is mentioned on page 17. Moving on to page 215.
It's quite a jump.
Yes, quite a, quite a jump.
We sped red through it.
Exactly, exactly, you guys are a sharp group. So on 215, this is where we talk about the internal control over financial reporting, and then compliance and other matters. With respect to compliance and other matters, there were no instances of non-compliance noted, and under internal control over financial reporting, there are two findings that we have, which we'll go over a little bit later. If you go to page 217, this is your opinions with respect to the major federal programs that we tested, and the county has complied in all material respects with the major programs that we tested. Okay, moving on, page 220, this is your CIFA, identifies all of the federal dollars that you have expended during the year, it goes from 220 all the way up through 227, and then on 228, it talks about the notes with respect to the schedule of expenditures of federal awards, and page 229 summarizes the fact that you have received an unmodified opinion. And then, if we go to page 230, this is where it discusses the five programs that we tested with respect to the federal programs, and then, as I mentioned before, there were two findings within the internal control area, and this is noted on finding 2022-001, and the first finding was related to GASB-87, that's a new standard that was implemented relating to leases, and there was some adjustments that we had to make. Management is going to undertake a more significant review of that particular area, and so they, you know, they hope they will correct that for next year. And then if you look at finding number 2022-002, this is a finding related to grant revenues, related to fee-for-service grants, a lot of entities have received, you know, tremendous amount of funding, both federal and state, and this finding relates to that. Moving on to the management letter, two areas to note here, under fixed assets, the fact that you have construction in progress, and those particular items weren't placed in service, they have an asset on the books, however, that was actually placed in service, so you're supposed to depreciate that once it is placed in service. And then, under IT, similar to other governmental entities, we do, there's always areas in IT with respect to things that you could approve on. Moving on to the those charged with governance, page one indicates our responsibility with respect to the audit, we also discussed our plan, scope, and timing, we've complied with all ethic requirements. And on page two, it discusses the significant accounting policies, once again, you've implemented GASB-87, and under significant accounting estimates, you have six estimates relating to landfill closure and post-closure, you have depreciation, you estimate your net pension liability, your other post-employment benefits, your healthcare claims, and the fair value of investments, and those particular fair value items, we have looked at the key assumptions, and they are reasonable in relation to the financial statements presented as a whole. Moving on to page three of the document, of course, your sensitive estimates with respect to that net pension liability, that's in 11 and 12, there were no significant difficulties encountered in performing the audit, all uncorrected, the statements are attached in the back of this document, all corrected, misstatements have been made as well, there were no disagreements with management, there were no consultations with other accountants regarding any issues, and then on the last page, on page four, there were no other significant matters or findings to discuss, and the other information with respect to the annual report is included on page four. Certainly like to take this opportunity to thank your team, Jenny Hobbs, Bobby Joe, Val, Kyle, Henry, and Mike Enser for their assistance during the audit, you received your audit and your single audit combined, if you can recall from the last few years, we would just present the ACFR, then the single audit was done later, so kudos to your team, and then I'd like to recognize our team as well, working, you know, with your team, Ryan Edner, Catherine Welsh, Melissa Bonner, Keith Ammerman, and Dana Fontenot. We worked very well together, big undertaking in getting this done, and I believe you've got this done earlier than you ever have, correct? Okay. And that concludes my presentation, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Fantastic, and again, I agree with you, we got a great team, and really, again, appreciate the due diligence that Jenny, you provided through example, and the work you had with your team in getting us to where we are, so.
I wish to reiterate Commissioner Rothstein's compliments to you, it is a tremendous amount of work to have all these numbers come together and balance out. As someone who did some accounting in college and business, I know how difficult it is when you find something that's not balanced out, you got to track it down through this maze and get it to work. So you and staff and the auditors put a whole lot of work into this, and it shows the public that we're by the book, you know, you hear so much out there, but this reaffirms that what we're doing is correct, so thank you for all you do.
Okay, we do have a couple of questions.
Yeah, you got some, and I got some.
First, I almost appreciate you get done this faster than before, if you could have postponed another week or two, it'd been even better, that's fine. Second, on page 229, material weaknesses identified, says yes, can I get a better understanding what that actually means?
Sure, so those were the two weaknesses that we're talking about. GASB-87, with respect to implementing leases, significant GASB that's out there, a lot of entities have struggled with this particular GASB, it was postponed for many years, and basically what you have to do is you have to identify the particular asset, look at the details of the contract, and then book that particular item. So there were some issues with respect to the identification and the recording of, I believe, the entity also hired an outside party to assist with that, and even with that, it's just a, you know, it's a difficult GASB to implement, and you have a fair amount of volume, but nothing that wasn't corrected, it was corrected, all the adjustments were made. All right. Yep, and then the other item is with respect to fees for service. You know, as I mentioned, entities have received a lot of funding, and you can either, you know, some entities, you'll, depending on the program, you'll get your dollars in advance, so there's, you know, there's a way to record that, sometimes some of the grants are expenditure-driven, where you spend the money first, and then you apply for reimbursement, and then some are fees for services. So you have one, you know, three different revenue recognition policies on top of multiple funding sources, which is great, I mean, that's what you want, you want to get funding for different services, but what that does, it puts a strain on the group and accounting for that, and reviewing that, and going through all the detail of each particular grant item, but nothing that can't be corrected going forward.
I appreciate that explanation, thank you.
So this is the eighth time I've looked at these, and they get, I appreciate all of the work throughout the time that I've been here. I think I know the answer to this because I've asked this two or three times in the past, but I think it's important for the pub, yeah, maybe that many. You don't audit one of our biggest, where a lot of our funds go, and that's the Board of Education.
That's correct.
Or Carroll County Public Schools, and then certainly Carroll Community College, but as it pertains to those two, and, you know, the huge amount of funds that they receive, just touch on, you, you're okay with how they're audited, and you use what the other auditors do to come to the conclusion here, knowing full well that we give a ton of money, especially to the school system.
Yeah, great, great question. So, you know, the college, of course, and the Board of Ed, they're component units of Carroll County, and those audits are performed by other auditors. We have received their reports, reviewed their reports, and that particular information is noted in the independent auditor reports, that we don't audit that, but, you know, it has to be. has to be relied upon and disclosed to you that's audited by somebody else with respect to their funding. So, you know, we always say, go ahead and look in their report and their ACFR, look in their document, look to see what it says, look at their internal control letter, those particular items.
Okay, very good. That's, that's always been, when I was first learning the ropes here, that was one of those things that I went, wait a minute, we give them just shy of, well, whatever it is, the percentage, I'm not going to get into that argument again. I've been arguing about that for eight years, too. But the amount of money we give them, it's, we want to make sure that they're being audited on the level that we are, so that the two come together, or the three, and actually come together in one good report. So I appreciate you doing that, so.
I think I've heard it answered seven times, but I'm.
Well, yeah, I mean, and it's not just for me, it's for the public, really, because I get the questions all the time.
I know, I know.
You guys are getting audited, but you give all that money to the schools, are they getting audited?
Yeah.
Is that in here?
You're absolutely right.
Actually, they are, I'm sorry, component units are in our financial statements as well. We have to include, we're required to include them in there. So it was a great question to put them in.
Of course it was, Jen, of course it was a great.
Jenny, you don't have to go there. Really. It was an okay question. But, um.
Maybe the first time was quick. Seventh time is just average question.
It goes downhill after the great, but I think as important, which is, and I appreciate this, is the timing of these audits. The timing of, you know, us doing this to where CCPS is being audited. You know, this is one of the challenges we have with our budget is, you know, ensuring that the schools get the money, you know, resources they need as we're delivering our budget, and sometimes it's off because of their negotiations. Is the schools getting audited at the same time, or is it in an approach where it allows for this audit to be very open, like, you know what I mean?
Yeah, so I'll answer that, Jenny. So the audit of the school system, MSDE, Maryland State Department of Education, they require it to be done by September thirtieth.
Okay.
So you have received your opinion of that particular entity by September thirtieth.
Okay, yeah. And that's, you know, just.
Their date's worse than yours.
What's that?
Their due date is worse than yours.
Yeah.
Okay. So.
How many years have you been doing this for us, Dan?
A fair amount. I'm gonna say.
Seven.
Seven.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you're here.
Feels longer, but.
I think. We've seen you for.
Okay, right, seven.
Seven out of the eight. So thank you for your hard work on this, too. I don't know how you all do this.
And once again, I'd like to thank our team and Jenny's team.
Right.
Yep.
Thank you.
No action necessary, just our share and appreciation. And again, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Wasn't that great?
Yeah, it came right off the top of my head.
Twenty twenty-three National Association of Victims of Crime Act, VOCA, Assistance Administrators' Grant Application and Award.
I like these matching numbers I'm seeing here.
Sir.
That's always a good sell, right?
Yes.
Go for it.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
Mr. Burke, Ms. Wyndham. For the record, I am Alan Culver, State's Attorney for Carroll County. With me is Rebecca Gray, who is the Director of the State's Attorney's Office Victim Witness Unit. And we are here to request your approval, as Commissioner Rothstein said, the National Association of VOCA Assistance Administration, a five thousand dollar grant. So during National Crime Victims Week, the purpose of the grant is to bring further awareness to victims and victims' rights. The National Crime Victims Week is April twenty-third through April twenty-ninth. And the reason why this year is significant is we host the National Crime Victims Memorial Service for our region. Our region includes Carroll, Allegheny, Frederick, Montgomery, and Washington Counties. And essentially what the service is, it's a ceremony to recognize those who lost their lives to crimes, and also to show support for the community and the families and the survivors of those who lost their lives. Last year's memorial service was held in Washington County. We hold the memorial service every four years. So last year, Washington County, they read five hundred and seventy-two names, victims of crimes. Now, those are not all from twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Those are the names that families and survivors have submitted over the years, beginning in the early nineties. So as far as our office goes, just to give you an idea of how many victims that we serve, from January of this year until November fifteenth, we've had a total of six hundred and thirty-five criminal cases involving victims. Total number of victims would be eight hundred and eighty-two. That includes not only those who have lost their lives, but obviously the survivors. So essentially, the purpose of the grant from our perspective is to assist with the expenses as they relate to the memorial service. And we'd also like to look at expanding the week, doing other functions to hopefully bring awareness. The service is held on April twenty-third. April twenty-third, and we're hoping that maybe if we are awarded this grant, we'd be able to do something on April twenty-ninth as well, so kind of bookend National Crime Victims Week to bring more awareness, not only for those who have lost their lives, but also to the survivors. And so just to give you an idea of kind of how much we spend on the memorial service, the last time we hosted the service was in two thousand and nineteen. At that time, we spent approximately thirty-five hundred dollars hosting the service. So that's the information we have as far as our grant request, and we're certainly open to any questions that you might have.
Mr. Culver, where would this service be held at? At the courthouse, or?
Typically, we look at a venue. In two thousand and nineteen, we held it at the Sykesville Volunteer Fire Department. But that's one of the, it's one of the factors we look at is the cost for the locations. You have five hundred and seventy-two names read. You'll typically have a couple hundred people who attend the service, so obviously, it's got to be a facility that would, that would host these folks.
It's kind of like the opial vigil that takes place?
It's similar, yes, yeah. It would be kind of a same kind of setup. I don't think we get as many people in attendance, but it's probably close, and it would be kind of a similar type of setup.
Well, I want to offer, I see the dates would be after I'm out of session for the General Assembly. And for those of you out there who don't know, I am a survivor of an attempted murder. You know, I was beaten in the head while I was asleep with a hammer, and then stabbed while I got stumbled around. So I know the impact psychologically being a victim of crime has upon one, and how important it is for us to have an awareness of this, and the resources which are offered to help people. When I went through that in the nineties, there was no counseling to help me process it, and I was in a mental haze for a full week. And I think that's a really critical time to intervene with people and help them out before it can, you know, progress into something else. So this is very admirable stuff you're doing, so thank you. And I want to be able to participate and help out in any way possible I can.
I appreciate that, Commissioner Boucher.
You're welcome.
We'll be happy to reach out to you.
Move the Board of Commissioners to approve the submission of the twenty twenty-three National Association of VOCA Assistance Administrators' Grant Application and Acceptance of Award.
Second.
Motion, guys, second. Any discussion? Seeing here, none all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And let me just say, barring something unforeseen, this is probably the last time I will appear before this Board of Commissioners, so thank you very much for your service, and I've certainly appreciated working with each and every one of you, and some of you I know hopefully I'll work with you in the future, so.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Alan. Thank you very much.
Okay, leasing vehicles. That's all it says. Let's see, who do we got? Okay. How many vehicles are we going to be leasing or asking to lease?
This agreement would include the lease of four vehicles.
Okay. Go for it.
The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Bureau of Fleet Management Warehouse Operations requests your approval to lease vehicles on an as-needed basis from Agni Auto Leasing LLC in the amount of not to exceed thirty thousand dollars annually. Carroll County will be piggybacking a Baltimore County government's contract for leasing of vehicles that was competitively bid. This amount is within the approved budget, and no additional funds should be necessary.
Commissioners, as Ms. Robinson stated, this is simply an agreement that allows the county to lease vehicles on an as-needed basis throughout the year.
So we may not be leasing any vehicles at all?
We will be.
Okay. Then my question comes, why don't we just buy an extra vehicle?
So the reason for a short-term lease, if there's a position or a specific task that is short-term in nature, it may not be feasible or cost-effective to actually purchase a vehicle. So having vehicles that are readily available for just a short amount of time are more beneficial than actually purchasing a vehicle.
So this is more cost-efficient for the county?
Correct.
To do it this way?
Correct.
It's interesting.
All right.
What kind of vehicles do they have for leasing?
Anything from the smallest sedan you can think of to a full-size pickup, anything in between.
And my mind's racing now a little bit, Reed, here, you know, because of the fact that we've got such a long out-delivery times for some of these vehicles, especially for some of these new lieutenants we're going to be hiring for fire and EMS. Would it, would it make sense to maybe get just a couple leased vehicles to put them in? Because I know we're trying to borrow from volunteer stations. I don't want to try to get into all that, but, you know, maybe this is a, maybe this is a way to help fix that time period that we're waiting so long for on these vehicles.
Do we have to modify the vehicles? I mean, for lieutenants?
Yeah, that's why I asked what type, you know? I don't know.
Yeah. Like I said, it's a wide range of vehicles that we could lease. I've been exploring all options to.
I'm sure you have, okay.
I think as we are now, especially with fire and EMS, they are in vehicles. I do not see the need to get extra vehicles to supplement or do the same thing that the vehicles that they're currently in. I think at this point, waiting for the vehicles that we have ordered is what we need to stick with for now.
All right.
Okay.
Acme. Don't you remember the old Roadrunner car?
Yes.
The Anvil. Everything he got was from Acme, so.
Rocket.
Okay.
I'll make the motion, the Board of Commissioners to approve the lease of vehicles on an as-needed basis at a cost of not to exceed thirty thousand dollars annually to the Acme Leasing Company.
Second.
It is true. Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All that stuff worked.
Okay. Now. Discussion and consideration of proposed resolution authorizing eminent domain in connection with Airport Safety Improvement Project. Before we get started, Chris, do we have anybody?
No, sir, we have no callers, but if we do get one, I will interject.
As opposed to interject, just inject.
Inject.
Okay, less syllables.
Eject.
Oh, well, that's a different.
Not that one.
Yeah, we don't need you to eject.
Acme. Yeah, there you go, Brian. You used to watch it, too, didn't you?
I did, I did.
Put a rocket under there. Okay. Let's get this started and see where it goes.
Morning, Commissioners. We are here to present a resolution authorizing and directing the Department of Public Works, along with the Department of County Attorneys, to institute and complete condemnation proceedings if necessary for the property acquisition required for the completion of the airport safety enhancements. At this time, I will hand it over to Ray Lewis from Delta Airport Consultants to provide more background on this project.
Thank you. Roy Lewis, but I will answer to anything. The county has partnered with the Federal Aviation Administration and the Maryland Aviation Administration for more than fifteen years to take advantage of the technology advances in aircraft navigation and instrument landing systems following introduction of the Global Positioning Satellite System for civilian use earlier this century. The new technology eliminates the need for expensive ground-based equipment and allows general aviation airports, such as Carroll County Regional Airport, to achieve greater improved visibility minimums for precision instrument approach procedures, thus enhancing the safety of the operations and expanding the all-weather operating capability of the airport. It also allows the reduced visibility minimums for non-precision approaches also. The plan of development for Carroll County to join similar airports and using this newest technology was conceived during the airport master plan, provided by another consultant, completed in two thousand and eight, and approved then by the Federal Aviation Administration and the Maryland Aviation Administration. The plan recommended a replacement runway be constructed at a greater separation distance from the parallel taxiway to achieve the FAA safety objectives and allow reduced visibility minimums to be established, along with the introduction of the precision instrument approach procedure. The required visibility minimums for pilots under this plan are to be reduced by half for aircraft approaching to land at the airport from the north, and by a quarter for aircraft approaching to land from the south.
Say that again, Roy. By half from the north.
The required visibility minimums for pilots are to be reduced by half for the aircraft that would be approaching from the north, and by a quarter for the aircraft approaching from the south.
Thank you.
It's a significant reduction for any aircraft operating under instrument flight rules.
Right. That's a very important piece here. Okay, go ahead. Sorry.
The plan of development, please interrupt me at any point.
Okay.
The plan of development also includes an extended runway length to accommodate the existing and projected air traffic demand for the airport. Following the economic downturn during two thousand and ten and two thousand and twelve period, the FAA required the county to reexamine the plan of development that was proposed and to confirm operational demands still existed as projected. An airport master plan was completed in two thousand and fifteen that reconfirmed the need for the replacement runway. However, it did reduce the initial runway length required from the sixty-four hundred feet from the two thousand and eight plan down to five thousand and five hundred feet in the two thousand and fifteen plan. That's still an extension of four hundred feet over the existing runway length. The FAA expects the airport sponsor, that is Carroll County, to take active steps to prevent or mitigate proposed incompatible land uses. Thus, following completion of the FAA-required environmental assessment effort and the associated public meetings and public hearings, the county embarked on the land acquisition program detailed in the plan of development and committed to the FAA to pre-fund the land acquisition through a twelve million dollar bond fund the county secured in two thousand and nineteen. The county has completed acquisition of approximately half.
About twelve million dollar bond fund, when was that?
Twenty nineteen, is my understanding, yes, sir. It was originally intended to terminate last June. I think it's been extended one year through June of two thousand and twenty-three. The county has completed acquisition of approximately half of the land needed for the development program through the use of that bond fund. Completed means title has been transferred, deeds are recorded. Another quarter of the parcels needed have promising ongoing negotiations with the property owners. The initial project to make way, if you will, for the replacement runway grading and development was recently awarded and is scheduled for construction during two thousand and twenty-three. That's the relocation of Meta Branch Road. The county is in the final stage of land acquisition with FAA funds programmed for the design of the replacement runway during their two thousand and twenty-three funding year. The county continues to negotiate with all property owners in accordance with all, excuse me, all remaining property owners in accordance with the FAA land acquisition directives. This includes the Uniform Act. This includes the Uniform Act. The FAA program requires that fair market value be established through appraisal, then followed by a review appraisal conducted by an independent third party. The property owners are directly involved in the appraisal process, and the FAA policy requires the county to consider any additional valuation information provided by the property owners during this process, including allowing an appraisal by the property owner to be presented as well for consideration, should the property owner so to choose to submit one.
So that could be up to three appraisals?
That's correct. Technically, the review appraisal is to review the process that the initial appraisal...
Right.
...appraiser conducted, but if the review appraiser, for some reason, does not recommend the initial appraisal, then it typically moves to the step where the review appraiser, then, who is also just as qualified under federal guidelines as the initial appraiser, to then establish the value based on his professional opinion or her professional opinion.
And then the landowner can also request an appraisal?
Absolutely, absolutely, and, and the, the FAA, the federal land acquisitions guidelines require the airport sponsors to take all of that information into consideration.
Okay.
And it has to be documented as a part of the negotiation process. Some of the acquisition need involves navigation easements. That's essentially the purchase of the air rights over the property, does not impact the use of the actual property. This could involve the trimming or removal of trees that penetrate the FAA-protected airspace. The removal of trees is a decision made by the property owner during negotiations. The purchase of the air rights is only to ensure that that protected airspace is clear of obstructions to enhance the, the safety of aircraft operations. Essentially acquiring the air rights above the property. The height above ground of a given easement varies, of course, depending on how far that property parcel is away from the airport operations area. The county is obligated and mandated by the FAA to secure the needed property interest under the grant assurances the county has committed to with each grant project that's been established throughout the history of the airport. That's over 20 federal grants to date, many more pending. Other parcels would be subject to the runway protection zone, not a navigation easement, but where the RPZ, as it's called, requires the county to actually acquire that property in fee simple interest. Or, in some instances, that may be accommodated through a restricted land use easement that has already occurred with a particular parcel during the first half of this program. The RPZ is for the protection of people and property on the ground. Statistically, within that trapezoidal area defined as the RPZ, if an aircraft incident was going to occur, it would be in that box. That's why the FAA mandates that that property land use be controlled. This, of course, is, is a point of negotiation with each property owner in each situation, each specific situation. For the parcels where only a portion of the property is required, the county's offer for acquisitions and some, for some property owners, this remaining quarter properties, if you will, have been rejected by some property owners. Some property owners have rejected the county's offer and refused to present additional value information or to present a counteroffer. Some property owners have simply ignored the county's offers with no response whatsoever. Some counteroffers by some property owners have been presented requesting a purchase price as much as 20 times the appraised value without any support for their claim of their asking price. Others have requested an acquisition of the entire property when only a small portion is required and would therefore be reimbursable by the FAA to the county. They're asking for their entire property to be acquired even though a tiny portion is required for the project. It should be noted that many development alternatives have been examined over the years. I've been personally involved in this project for more than 15 years. Many development alternatives have been examined, and no alternative exists today would not require some level of land acquisition. That's because there are some non-standard conditions today that the FAA has allowed to exist because you're moving towards a greater project. Some alternatives would even require existing agreements that you struck with property owners in the past to be renegotiated, and greater impact to these property owners would occur. Questions?
Well, Tim, did you want to, uh, comment on this before we start the question? I mean...
No, I don't have comments. After his, uh, presentation is done, we'll, we'll be talking about the resolution that we're proposing to you.
Okay, okay.
Existing agreements would have to be renegotiated, such as?
One particular property owner, I will not get into specifics, of course, because the negotiations are confidential with the property owners, but, uh, one, one particular property owner under the planned program, under the proposed replacement runway concept, has a very small portion of their property within this RPZ area. The county's already negotiated with them to not acquire any of that property. It would only be a restricted land use for this very tiny corner of their property, which means they would still own the property, but basically you cannot have a congregation of people or you cannot build structures out there. An alternative, for instance, if you, uh, considered the existing runway, well, the existing runway also has RPZs, and that, and the existing RPZ overlies a greater portion of their property than what has been negotiated for the proposed project. So we need to go back to that property owner and void, if you will, that prior deal that has been negotiated, and then say that a greater portion of their property would be impacted. This particular property owner, it is a residential property owner, and in some instances, it could impact their home.
The, um, the master plan 2008?
Yes, sir.
Um, I just want to, I wrote down a lot, you provided a lot, 6,400 feet, 2015, it got revised to 5,500.
That's correct, sir.
With 5,500 feet, there is still the delta of, huh, delta, of 400 feet, correct? That needs to be...
That's correct.
Um, and everything we're talking about is dealing with safety, not in increasing the, um, capabilities of the airfield or the airport for other aircraft. It's, it's all safety for existing aircraft?
The premise for the 2008 master plan that was conducted by the URS Corporation as well as the 2015 master plan that was prepared by my firm, Delta Airport Consultants, both determined that the existing and projected fleet mix would be represented by the medium-sized corporate business jet as the design aircraft. That's a lot of words, that's a canned answer, of course, but it's, it's the, it's a medium-sized business jet. The family of those aircraft is the critical design aircraft for the airport. So, yes, sir. The, the reason that the reduced runway length occurred is because in 2008, uh, there was a tenant on the airport that projected the acquisition of a much larger business jet, and they provided the county that information, uh, in written form. The FAA accepted that as the coming, uh, critical design aircraft, and the designs for the runway length then were going to be, uh, longer. That was going to be 6,400 feet. The 2015 plan determined that the medium-sized business jet fleet only needed 5,500 feet.
Okay. You've, um, you've been doing this quite some time here, but you've also been doing it other locations, correct?
My degree is in aviation management. I spent almost 20 years with the airlines.
Yeah.
Uh, I was a, I was a professional airport manager at Richmond International for about a half dozen years, and I have been in airport consulting for 21 years. I am a pilot, multi-engine, instrument rated.
And using these type of tools that we're going to get into in a minute, um, with this type of resolution, you've experienced that as well?
Absolutely, ongoing with many other clients nationwide right now. I, I conducted two, two depositions on behalf of a client last week.
Okay.
I would like to add to that, please, if I may, sir.
Oh, absolutely.
We work all the way up until we can't to negotiate an amicable settlement. There's always an opportunity, or we certainly have the hope that there's always an opportunity for an amicable agreement to occur, even after eminent domain filings have been initiated. In many instances that I've been personally involved with, that settlement does occur before a trial date.
There's been 20, one, one last question, I apologize, 20 federal grants, you said that had been in the mix of this?
Under the AIP program, the Airport Improvement Program, which was instituted in 1982. Since World War II, there's been a chain of federal aviation support programs, uh, and the most recent one, and the current one, is the AIP Airport Improvement Program. Under that program since 1982, the county has received in excess of 20 federal grants. Each one of those executions of that grant has a grant assurance document attached to it, and that has to be, uh, signed and recorded within a real property acquisition. So you're bound by the grant assurances which require you to, as an obligated public use airport, to comply with all Federal Aviation Administration guidelines, design specifications, and, um...
Yeah, do we know the total cost of those 20 grants?
I do not know off the top of my head, no, sir.
Okay. I, I'll go ahead.
The only comment I was going to make is that during your presentation and throughout the entire time I've been involved in this, the main reason or the reason this is being done is for safety enhancement at the airport. Safety enhancement, that's what stands out to me. We're not trying to make it a larger runway to bring in bigger jets or that, it's not what it's for. It's for safety enhancement for the people coming in, landing, and taking off at our airport. And that's, that's what sticks out to me, and that's just what I want to say. And you said, you used the word safety numerous times in your presentation, because that's what this is.
That is absolutely correct. It is, it is GPS, state-of-the-art technology at a minimum visibility level that you cannot take benefit of today.
Thanks, Commissioner Frazier. The only thing, not to get into the weeds of the project, but one of the main improvements of this is shifting a runway down and over to get out of the intersection of Littlestown Plague, that, that runway protection zone that Roy mentioned.
That's an extremely important point. The FAA, if I may, the FAA instituted a, a policy guideline in 2012, recently incorporated, September 16th of this year, incorporated into new advisory guidance where they consider intersections such as that, uh, highly incompatible with runway protection zones. And that is a cornerstone of this project where the current RPZ, even though smaller, overlies that intersection. And I know that there is a, that there's a traffic concern there quite often, there certainly was this morning, there was an accident there this morning where the fire truck went by me one way and, and, um, the ambulance the other way. So, uh, for that reason, the FAA prefers, and it goes to a headquarters level under review, prefers that those runway protection zones, whenever possible, do not overlie that type of intersection.
You said that, um, out of the private properties, half are done, you've...
Out of the total parcels identified for the land program, uh, and I, I don't necessarily if there's a, you know, if that's a pure quantitative number...
No, I get you.
But from, from $12 million bond fund, which we reconfirmed would cover, uh, the acquisition anticipated, uh, just a few years ago, uh, over $6 million has been expended by the county to purchase land. And I feel that if one assumes that the remaining acquisition's somewhere between 5 and 6 million, I think that, you know, there's a sizable portion of that that is well on its way to being successfully negotiated.
Right.
The remainder, however, has a big question mark on it, and I must add that time is of the essence here because the, the, as I said earlier, the programming for the design funds, uh, are set for 2023. The county's required to update the capital plan with the FAA and the MAA every year. We're entering that update session now. So, the FAA and the state both will want to hear that the county is wrapping up this land program very soon.
The design funds 2023, is it the spring of 2023? Is it the spring of 2023 for the design funds?
That's when the grant applications would typically go in, the federal fiscal year operates, oh, you know that.
Yep.
October 1st to September 30th.
Okay.
So, but, uh, grant applications are due typically no later than May, possibly June 1st, and then...
Yeah.
And then you get the, or the Public Works Department gets the grant offer on September 20th and has to turn it around by September 30th.
Wow, okay.
Have you personally been involved in the negotiations?
Every single parcel for 15 years, yes, sir.
Well, Mr. Lewis, I say that initially I was a little bit disappointed, you're not a MVP NFL linebacker, but I think you're very capable and knowledgeable of this information. I'm glad you came here to talk to us today. This has been very difficult for us, and I think you've articulated the situation we're in very well, especially in legal terms, and that's the most important thing for people in the audience to understand it. We are kind of up against a legal wall and have a liability in this, and you explained it precisely. And with that, I move the Board of Counsel...
No, 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 hold on, there's no legal terms yet.
Yeah.
Uh, we, this has actually been no legal term, this has been a description of the activity, the history, where we are today, and where we want to go tomorrow.
Just a planner talking about, do appreciate your comments, Commissioner Bush. Thank you.
Appreciate that, so...
There's a legal framework to this, and you articulated it.
And what I want to do is allow our legal counsel to now talk to us about the potential resolution.
What staff has presented you with is, is a proposed resolution, and by signing it, you would be authorizing, not directing, but authorizing staff to pursue eminent domain if necessary, uh, to, to complete the land acquisition process for the safety improvement project. The resolution does not institute any eminent domain, it doesn't start any cases, it merely authorizes staff to utilize or use, uh, eminent domain if necessary after exhausting all negotiations. And it's designed to demonstrate to the Federal Aviation Administration and the Maryland Aviation Administration that we are serious about finishing this project, that we are going to use the money that they've been giving us or granting us all, all these years to finish the project, and this will demonstrate to them that we are serious about that. Staff also understands, as Mr. Lewis stated, that the good faith negotiations would continue even after the adoption of this resolution. Our goal is to resolve these acquisitions amicably. Eminent domain is... Eminent domain is typically a measure of last resort. And I would remind everyone that under federal law, any property owners that are impacted by eminent domain will receive the fair market value for any portion of their property impacted by any eminent domain case. So this is, as I said, it does not initiate any eminent domain proceedings. It is a resolution authorizing staff to, if necessary, go down that route after the exhaustion of negotiations.
This also indicates that we're want to move forward in a timely manner. That we want to get this so that the FAA is still giving us the the grants and the money because there's kind of a timetable set up about when money is going to be coming in and so forth. We want to stay with that timetable. Am I correct in that?
The county is at risk of losing the program funding or certainly delaying the program funding within the next sixty to ninety days if action is not taken today.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Sixty to ninety days if action is not taken today, losing, like, what funding?
FAA program support.
Really?
The county is the the Airport Capital Improvement Program.
We already know this, that's.
I was just bringing it up.
No, I know, but.
No, but I thought I thought it was, for some reason, I thought it was like April or something. Maybe that's ninety days, I don't know.
March is.
Yeah.
Okay.
The the Capital Improvement Program is required to be updated every every year. And the deadline to submit that to the FAA is March the thirtieth.
Okay.
The county is required to schedule a meeting well prior to that to discuss the capital program. And that meeting will be held with the FAA within the six, within the next sixty to ninety days. I apologize for not being clear, Commissioner.
No, you were. Okay, I'm being barked at by my.
No, I didn't. I'm not trying, I'm just, I'm frustrated with this because I don't I don't see the respect for the the taxpayer dollars that we've already spent or that are going to be coming into the program or the respect of those property owners that have already settled. We we have to do this. There's just, I'm I'm just frustrated with this whole thing. I really am. And in some of these cases, in two, maybe three, we're talking about air and a couple trees. And yet, we're we're, you know, it it appears as if our negotiations are attempting to try to take huge amounts of property from these people, and that's just not the case. So I'm just, I'm frustrated with this. I'm frustrated because I have three friends who are pilots that continue to say it's one of the most dangerous airports to land on and take off from. I've I've been on quite a few air air crash disasters. One of them will always stick in my mind on Hugh Shop Road. And I, this has got to, this has got to move forward. That's why I'm not trying to bark at anybody. I'm just being frustrated at at the fact that we've got to move forward with this, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Rentsch. I I just wanted to just comment in on the taxpayer dollars. So this this entire project is scheduled to be funded ninety percent by the FAA, five percent by the MAA, and leaving the county's portion at five percent.
Okay.
Okay. Um. Looking at this, in ninety days, if the county doesn't have this done, FAA wouldn't allow a leadway of thirty, forty, fifty more days, sixty, whatever.
I can't speak for what the FAA will or will not do, sir, but I can tell you that they program the discretionary funding, which is tied to this project on a three-year rolling window. And they will make a decision during this year's capital improvement program on how that will move forward. And the acquisition of the land program being completed during calendar twenty-three, calendar twenty twenty-three is a critical step in the process. That's not to say that that if a property owner is is that isn't to say that everything has to be completed in calendar twenty twenty-three, but all of the deals, the negotiations have to be completed in twenty twenty-three.
So it's fourteen months or thirteen months to have, everything has to be completed.
That commitment will have to be made to the FAA within the next sixty to ninety days.
I I got an issue. And I'll call it like it is. Commissioner Boucher walked out. He's got what he believes is a more pressing meeting as opposed to having the responsibility staying on the dais for this decision. It's his choice in doing so, but we've held this discussion off to allow the five of us to be present because this will be the first time we are authorizing eminent domain in our county in this manner. And I'm not comfortable when we're not all here. And even with this conversation. Now, whether it would sway Commissioner Boucher or not, I don't know. But we have a responsibility for our county that when we're making a decision like this, that all five of us, you know, are here unless, you know.
His note did say he might be back. So what we could do if the board wanted to is go on if if you don't mind sticking around for a little while.
I'm here all day.
Yeah. No, I I appreciate and.
Next agenda items and then bring this back.
We we can. I I apologize about this, but yeah, I we have that responsibility to our community to make a decision when it's this important, I believe, where all five of us have the opportunity to further discuss it. So if I can delay, go ahead.
I mean, I I don't, he was getting ready to make the motion to go for it, so I don't know. Does that make a difference?
Except he was trying to make a motion to go for it on the legal basis, but the legal basis wasn't even discussed.
Okay, well, okay.
I mean, whether, again, it it sways him or not, I'm not going to judge that. But I I think it's a also a perception.
I mean, cut you off. Let's, if if everyone's agreement, go on the other items of the agenda. If he's not back by the time we get the end of it, I still think we should vote on this today, whether he's in the room or not. But we'll give him time to come back. That's just my opinion because I think this is important. I think we have to move forward with it. I would like to move forward with this today.
Okay.
No comment this time.
Okay. Okay.
Missus. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to item number seven, Freedom District Water Treatment Plant. Rebuild Flow Serve vertical turbine pump.
Good morning, Commissioners. The Office of Procurement in cooperation with Bureau of Utilities requests your approval to award a contract for the rebuild of one of the three Flow Serve vertical turbine pumps in operation at the Freedom District Water Water Treatment Plant to Motor Technology Incorporated in the amount of ninety-nine thousand nine hundred seventy-four dollars. This award will be made via a term contract which has a yearly limit of one hundred thousand dollars. Commissioners, we're also asking that you, given the emergency situation of the pump and the significantly time of thirty-two weeks, we're requesting to increase the term contract limit to one hundred and eighteen thousand due to the fact that this increase will actually exceed the one hundred thousand dollar term contract limit by approximately eighteen thousand dollars. This bid amount is within the adopted budget and no additional funds will be necessary.
Good morning, gentlemen. You may or may not be aware of this. The replacement Freedom District Water Treatment Plant was completed and came online in in twenty-ten. The plant has a design capacity of four point zero million gallons of processed water per day for the Freedom Service area. At this time, the current usage or volume needed on a daily basis is about two point one million gallons. The plant operates on on a continuous twenty-four-seven operation. Finished water is sent into the service area by three Flow Serve vertical turbine pumps that are in place at the plant. Based on the relatively low demand of the water at this time, the plants are used on an individual basis and never in tandem at this time. The the three pumps are rotated on a set schedule. Since the opening of of the plant, each of the three pumps has been rebuilt once. This current pump will be the first to undergo a second rebid. At most obviously, pump redundancy is critical for the water plant. If this pump were to go completely out of service, the plant would then be down to two, to a two-pump rotation to 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 supply the entire service area. And of course, my staff's stress levels would would increase quite quite dramatically.
Yeah. You think?
As Carrie said, the lead time for the required rebuild parts is thirty-two to thirty-six weeks. That's very consistent with other items that you've heard in recent weeks. The sooner that these pumps can be ordered, the better off we are. This pump will will remain in service as long as possible during the waiting period for the parts. We we can't damage it any more than than what it's what's happening now. It'll 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 stop working at some point. This scope of work includes the the removal of the pump, transportation to York, PA, a complete rebuild, transportation back to Freedom, installation and testing. And in case you were wondering, the cost of a new pump like this would be on the order of four to five hundred thousand dollars. So we we are, the rebuild essentially will will give us a brand-new pump for about ten to twelve, about five to six years.
No, okay, I appreciate. And Mr. Burke, you may want to learn a little bit of comedy relief that is being shared. So just, you know, it was content and delivery, so I appreciate that, Annie.
Why, thank you.
Absolutely. I move that Board of Commissioners award a contract for the rebuild of one of the three Flow Serve vertical turbine pumps at the Freedom District Water Treatment Plant to Motor Technology Incorporated in the amount of ninety-nine thousand nine hundred seventy-four dollars.
Yeah, but wait a minute. Wait, you had said that you wanted to to increase that.
The amount of the award is ninety-nine thousand nine hundred seventy-four dollars. We have to also increase the existing term contract that has a basically a yearly cap of a hundred thousand to a hundred and eighteen thousand. So we're not asking for, we're just asking for that limit to be raised in order to make the purchase.
Oh, so we're not doing this? We're not?
We are, but you want that cap to be raised.
Also, in addition, in addition to the award, we need the cap to be raised to a hundred and eighteen thousand.
Should that be a separate or can we include that in this?
Either way.
Okay, so in the amount of ninety-nine thousand nine hundred seventy-four dollars and in addition, raising the cap to a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars.
Second.
Yeah, I have a question. The other turbines that are being used, are they going to be in need of replay, are rebuilding and so forth or?
Eventually, yes, yes, Commissioner.
Well, my, since this is so critical, why don't we get them scheduled? I I mean, I don't know how it works, that you wait till you hear the wind or whatever. You know, something's wrong with it or you are you, is it preventative or? Because this one's broken down. Were all three of them put in at the same time?
Initially, when when the plant was constructed.
Yeah, so my guess is the other two are going to probably need some replacements soon. So my suggestion is get them on a schedule after this one gets done. That that way, you know, you don't have to stress your staff out.
We we are monitoring that, the the pumps were rebuilt.
Right, I assume you are, but I mean, if one is going, the other two probably gone soon, well.
We will watch very carefully.
Okay.
And we also have to be considerate of our of our cash flow issues too.
Yeah.
I heard the next board, that won't be a problem.
You think? So you're monitoring equipment and monitoring your staff. I appreciate it.
It's a legitimate concern based on the on the amount of time that it's going to take to get the parts or whatever in. Right. That's why, you know, I I tend to agree with you.
Appreciate that.
Proactive instead of reactive on these things. But I guess we're we're kind of held to this at this time.
I'll speak with my staff about the pros and cons of of ordering, of pre-ordering the the rebuilt parts at least.
Yeah, you might want to put them in inventory because I doubt if any of these parts are going to go down in price, that would probably be a shocker to everybody, right?
That's true.
So, okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I got a motion. Did I get a second? I believe I got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now let's talk about Hampstead Old North Waste Water Pumping Station. Abandonment of wet well.
The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Bureau of Utilities requests your approval to award a contract for the abandonment of the wet well of the Old North Waste Water Pumping Station in Hampstead to Mid-Atlantic Utilities Incorporated in the amount of thirty-two thousand nine hundred eighty-five dollars. This award will be made via competitively bid term contract. The bid amount is within the adopted budget and no additional funds will be necessary.
Gentlemen, the the new north pump station came online in in October, approximately six weeks ago. And it it's located on the IDA property just north of forty-two, to the west of Main Street. With that, the old north pump station has been taken offline and is no longer needed or or is it operationable? The Bureau would like to repurpose that old pump station facility into a much-needed, secure and convenient storage unit for emergency response equipment as well as mowers that are used throughout the Hampstead service area. To do so and for safety and structural purposes, the the wet well must be fully abandoned and filled. The the scope of work for this will 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 require a thorough flushing and pumping of the wet well, the removal and capping of piping that currently leads into and from the wet well, the the removal of a top section of the wet well to allow for a flat floor. It basically has a concrete lip around the perimeter at this point in time. And the the filling of the wet well with approximately seventeen cubic yards of flowable fill. And finally, the pouring of a of a concrete floor slab. At this time, response equipment for Hampstead is housed in at Hodges Facility in in Eldersburg. So any any emergency response needs a crew member to to go to Freedom District first and then back to Hampstead after hours or on weekends. Mowers are kept at various locations throughout the Hampstead service area. Wow.
Makes sense.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay, I move the Board of Commissioners award a contract for the abandonment of the wet well of the Old North Waste Water Pumping Station in Hampstead to Mid-Atlantic Utilities Incorporated in the amount of thirty-two thousand eight hundred five dollars and zero cents.
Second.
Okay, got a motion second discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's talk about purchase of mobile and portable radios.
Thought we just had this discussion.
Hey, 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 knock it off.
Okay.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Commissioners, this is a follow-up to a a presentation we made last Thursday, the seventeenth of November, at the gracious invitation of Commissioner Lantz. We're back here with some additional information for you to consider.
You're welcome.
With that, Commissioners, what we have for you today, at the request of the Board, are a couple of options for the proposed purchase of mobile and portal radios and accessories using a combination of federal assistance to firefighter grant funding and county funds, as well as an option for the potential purchase of a sufficient quantity of a enhanced, a remote speaker mic, that's a part of the issue of a portal radio to fire and EMS personnel, for your consideration as well. I do need to note, I will note at this point, that that option would require a budget transfer, which we are prepared for what's necessary for you to execute that if that's your choice. So with that, I'd like to simply note that, as presented last week with, I'll simply refer to it as the current remote speaker mic or standard RSM as it's known, that cost was one million sixty-eight thousand three hundred forty-eight dollars and seventy-one cents. The cost of the exact same order, but by replacing the standard remote speaker mic with the enhanced, which is known as an XC five hundred, raises the cost to one million ninety-seven thousand six hundred forty-four dollars and five cents. That's a difference of twenty-nine thousand three hundred fifteen dollars and thirty-four cents. Please note that either of these options are within funding that's in the existing budget. No additional funds would be necessary in order to proceed. And and I apologize. But procurement has made it clear that nothing has changed in what you heard last Thursday, that the contract, it's all the same, et cetera. The only thing that changes, we we change what's specified as far as the items to be purchased. So procurement is is pleased, is on board with this. It's simply now options for you to consider, if any.
Okay.
That's why Ms. Dunn and Ms. Robinson is not actually making the presentation. The the procurement piece is is still applies. So with that, Commissioners, if you have questions, again, what was proposed last Thursday was the was the purchase of one hundred and twenty-six. was the purchase of one hundred and twenty-six mobile radios and seventy-three portable radios with the necessary accessories, like the chargers, lapel mics, et cetera. What we've added today, at your request, is what that exact same order would be by simply exchanging or changing to the more enhanced remote speaker mic. That's where that delta or that difference of twenty-nine thousand, three hundred fifteen dollars and thirty-four cents to make that change.
Okay, I was not here last week.
Sure.
So I'm catching up on what you're sharing.
Great meeting.
What's that? So, I mean, the radios, this is an enhanced radio compared to what was being...
Not the radio, the thing that goes in the lapel. So that way...
Okay.
If you don't mind, because I'm trying to take your lead here. When you put the radio inside the turnout gear, you can't get to it to make adjustments. With this new microphone up here, you can make all the adjustments you need here, so you don't have to open up the turnout gear to get to the radio.
It's waterproof and fireproof.
And it's waterproof, and what's, kind of makes sense if we're talking about firefighters, waterproof and, I don't know, heatproof and whatever else.
All of that, but the biggest, I think the biggest advantage is the fact that the emergency button...
Emergency, I was getting the emergency button.
Actually, all of the radio controls would be available remotely on this enhanced.
So you don't have to get inside a turnout gear in order to make any changes.
It allows operation, change channels for...
One's able to be touched with the glove, you're able to...
It is specifically designed, Commissioner, for that purpose. That's where the XC designation comes from.
I know you were, and I don't know if you were, I don't know if you watched or not, Ed, but my, my point was, we always pride ourselves, the last eight years that the three of us have been here, and the last four that you've been here, on providing the best that we can for our folks on the front line. And I didn't think that we were providing the best, and that's why I asked Scott and his folks to go back and get us that price for the best.
So the difference is, is twenty-nine thousand for the first radios, or do we provide these for everybody at this time?
And that's...
That's the...
That's the next, that's option two.
That's option two, which would require certainly a bigger transfer, but in my mind...
If you're going to do it, do it.
Well, that's, yeah.
I mean...
I think we definitely, the order that we're putting in now will go with the enhanced mic up here, the additional twenty-nine thousand.
Which is the twenty-nine thousand.
Yeah, I think that's a, my, that's a no-brainer, we need to do that. But what I asked, I think I might ask Scott, whoever, last time, about the other orders that we want to look, replace, those microphones might go out, you know, be damaged within the next six months, a year, whatever, because there's no exact turnaround time. My thing on that is, unless, as they get broken, replace them with the better option, rather than buying it all at this time.
So right now, it's two hundred as opposed to three hundred and eighty-seven, give or take. Option one is...
Yeah, one hundred and twenty-six, right?
Option one B is what I'm looking at.
Commissioners, for clarity, the reason why it's labeled Option one A and one B is because it's basically the same order, the difference is the style of the remote speaker mic. Option two is a totally separate proposed purchase, that's the replacement microphones to do for all the other...
One B is the upgraded mic, correct?
Correct. One A is the traditional or standard, one B is the enhanced that was referenced last week.
My recommendation is to go with one B right now, so we got the upgraded mic, and as the other mics that are, that have already been purchased within the last year or two break down, then we replace them with the upgraded mics. That's my option, opinion or whatever.
Okay, would you like, are you open for debate now?
But if you guys want to do it differently, I'm okay, but I just, money-wise, I think that might be a wiser way, but go ahead.
So while I, I think that's a fine way to do it, I, we're still, we've still got two hundred and some odd radios out there without the capabilities that the one hundred and twenty-six will have.
Right. Three hundred and eighty-seven existing portables, and in this case, Commissioner, it's seventy-three portables and one twenty-six of the models, but yes, there is still...
How long would it take to get those others all up if you phase them in?
As quickly as we can take delivery. It's simply a, take the old one off, put the new one on. There's no program or anything required.
No, if we, like Commissioner Fraser said, we do the upgrade on the first number, and then the others, as we replace radios upgraded, how long would that take?
I think the correct answer is, we don't know, because there's no way of knowing how, when individual lapel mics would need to be replaced, Commissioner. One could be damaged and be replaced a few months after in service, and one might last years because it's not used.
Let me rephrase that. If we go to the other fire departments, as they come onboard, they would be upgraded on these radios, correct?
So you're... Okay, for the replacement mics, too? All right, well, what Taylor was just sharing is, when we put the current incremental fiscal year, multi-fiscal year plan together, we looked at the devices having a twelve-year life expectancy. And it is the interpretation that includes any of the accessories.
All right, then, that's too long, in my opinion. Way too long.
Okay, so, so I would argue that, again, that if we're going to provide the best, when you, when you contacted Motorola, was there a discussion about those lapel mics that we got with the latest batch of radios? Some sort of a trade-in, if you will?
No, sir.
They would not, they would not...
For the timing, and with all due respect, I'd actually had shared as responsive, Ms. Tenny is, I actually had these numbers back for you. Unfortunately, it was Thursday afternoon, that's how quick we got them back, but it was strictly to get you the quote you had asked for. There was no discussions about, well, trade-ins or those kinds of things. That obviously can still happen.
That's because, do you think that that possibility exists? Because a lot, some of this, some of these lapel mics are obviously young.
Yeah.
So, you know, perhaps there are departments in Motorola, Motorola provides equipment to departments all over the country. So I would think that those that were not in the best budget capabilities would maybe perhaps Motorola would have the opportunity to say, hey, we got these back, you know, it would provide a source for those departments that can afford...
And I think, Commissioner...
We can, we can afford this.
Right, I believe the county itself could pursue the resale of these. We've resold items that we've had, there was some limited useful life left, so there's no reason why we can't pursue the resale ourselves.
So there might be a possibility of recouping some of this value, some of the cost of this.
Absolutely.
Right.
I'd say, because of the twelve-year expected life cycle of these, I withdraw my objection, get them all at the same time, let's get them all at the same time. I thought it'd be like a year or two, we'd be phasing in the new ones, everybody else, but twelve years is way too long to wait. I don't want to do that.
And Commissioner, I will respectfully say, I believe the primary radio itself will, in fact, unless it's abused, it will last that ten or twelve years. I'm confident. I'm not confident that the current issued lapel mic will last that long.
Right, but they're going to last a bit longer than yours.
Definitely last longer.
Yeah, I have to agree. Let's, I think we should upgrade them all.
All right, Ted, do you have a comment on this?
Yes, two ideas have been proposed here that I want to make sure that you're consciously thinking about, not what it means in this moment, but what it means for future decisions. One idea is we should get the best, and a second idea is, if the best becomes available, even though we got something recently, that we're going to replace it with the best. What happens now if two years from now, another new, better one comes out? Are we going to then replace them again? Now, I'm not trying to make any particular argument here about what you should do, but we are setting up a scenario where that argument could be made, that every time there's advancement, that we need to make the move.
I understand what you're saying, but I don't see this as quite that argument, because of the way that the mics have to be used right now, if you want to change anything, you have to get inside the turnout gear, to the radio that's inside the turnout gear to do it. This has everything up here, which I just think is a big advantage. I'm not saying that the next one might have a, I don't know, voice control, I don't know what it would be, but something, that's not the same as having to open up the turnout gear and go inside.
Well, my point isn't just about the lapel mic, but about any technology.
I get that.
I just think the difference is dramatic enough that this needs to be done.
How long has the XC five hundred version of the RSM been around?
I cannot answer that question, Commissioner, I don't know.
Chief, do you know?
Well, that particular radio?
Yes, sir.
Probably at least five years so far.
So I would use that to say that, and this is no disrespect to staff, but I believe that the last batch of radios we've gotten should have had this XC five hundred on it, and not the current lapel mic that was with the radio. I truly believe that it was missed, again, I'm not pointing, there's no disrespect here to staff, because you know how I feel about the staff here in this building and throughout the county. You are the best at what you do, but I truly believe that it perhaps was either because we were under budget constraints or something, that this XC five hundred was not on that last batch. So I would argue that I don't think the technology's going to change in two, three, four years when it comes to this. It might with other things, but that line of thinking to me, when it comes to our folks running into burning buildings when everybody else is running out, it's not like a vehicle, it's not like, you know, a pump somewhere. This is life safety right here, ladies and gentlemen, and there should be no argument, even if we think it's going to be two or three years out, that the technology's going to change. This has already changed, and I think it was changed when we got the last batch, and we should have had the RSMs that we want to get on them as well.
Your point's well noted, Commissioner, and I think the only thing that needs to be added was, the current standard, if you will, the lapel mic that's currently being issued, was more than sufficient for the operations, for the standard operating procedures at that time. As the chief has shared with you, that has changed, precipitating the need to be able to remotely control it. We need to change the remote speaker mic to enable that, that change in operation.
And I also can't see that when, when I'm in, I'm going to stop using acronyms, Chief, when you're in a dangerous situation somewhere, you could have two firefighters, one with the old lapel mic and one with the new one, they could become separated within just ten feet of one another, or less, and be in a critically dangerous situation where they'd have to get to that and hit the, hit the emergency button or what have you, or call for help. One's got it, this one five feet away or ten feet doesn't, unacceptable.
Make a motion.
And for the record, Commissioner, our recommendation, our staff recommendation, for what it's worth, is, if the Board chooses to do the enhanced mic with the proposed radio order, it's our recommendation that you also replace the other ones. That's your choice. We, for that exact reason, Commissioner, that we cannot propose something that does not benefit everyone equally, to give to a few.
This is where I was ten minutes ago.
Good.
I thought so.
So I'm confused with all the staff recommendations.
Okay, I'll explain. So the or shouldn't be an or in two A and B. Two A and B are ands. So if you want to replace all of them, then you have to make motion two A first to get the money, and then two B to spend the money.
Now, the only question I do have is, it's outside of the budget cycle in doing this. We have the money, you know, in our general government, you know, funds to then transfer. Is there a concern, Ted, on this action? What I don't want to do, and you know this is setting up any precedence in moving funds, especially this late in the game when we're about ready to go into the budget session, season?
No, I'm not concerned about that. You know, sometimes it gets confusing on these out-of-budget things, out-of-budget cycle. My concern is when things that come up, my main concern is when things come up that could have been addressed in the budget and weren't. Sometimes things come up...
That's right.
...on their own timing, and we didn't have the opportunity to address it in the budget.
Yep, makes perfect sense, I appreciate that.
All right, I'm going to make the motion that we approve the purchase of three hundred and eighty-seven XC five hundred remote speaker microphones.
Well, no, first, let's move the money.
You have to do A first, you got to get the money. You ain't got no money yet.
I thought we always, we did it the other way sometimes. We do it and then we transferred it.
We always get the money first.
First, I'll move that the Board of County Commissioners approve resolution CTEC twenty-three dot zero four to transfer one hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred and nine dollars, thirty-nine cents from general government unallocated to public safety emergency communication radios for the purchase of three hundred and eighty-seven XC five hundred remote speakers.
Second.
End discussion. Sheen or none, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, go ahead.
My motion as previously stated.
And I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
It's called teamwork. Okay, let's talk...
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
No, Commissioners, I don't think you've chose the one A or one B yet by motion. That's the choice of the AFG purchase. Am I mistaken?
Got to do that one separately, too?
Yes, that is, one A or one B is a choice on the AFG related.
We got the microphones now.
Yes, you went to the option two.
Yeah, we got to do the day of the grant.
Yes, the grant-related purchase.
Okay, so I make the motion that we approve the purchase of one hundred and twenty-six mobile radios and seventy-three portables to include the XC five hundred remote speaker microphone, as presented with the grant monies.
Second. Got a motion, got a second. End discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay.
Village, doesn't it, to get this one?
That was complicated.
Takes a village, no kidding. Exactly, okay, let's talk about text amendment to the Employment Campus District.
Scott.
Or do you want to go back to the...
To allow solar energy conversion facilities.
Guess not.
Want to go back to...
Actually, I apologize, Linda, yeah, let, this could be an interesting one. Let's go back to the airport, follow on the discussion.
Airport.
Which was item six, discussion and consideration proposed resolution authorizing eminent domain in connection with airport safety improvement project. What's your name, Chris, we got anybody on the phone?
Nobody on the phone, sir.
Okay, feel free to interject or inject it, you're, you know, proactive, or reject, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so where we left it off, what's your name, Mr. Burke, you gave us guidance on the resolution?
Correct.
And the key word to me was, this is not saying we will do this, this is saying that we are authorized to do this, and it's up to the Board of County Commissioners to then determine and decide whether to enact eminent domain.
Correct.
Just, again, I wanted to ensure we had all five because of the importance of this type of decision for our, for our county and community, since it's never been done in the county, it has been done in other municipalities within the county.
It's been tried to be done.
Been tried to be done. I, I'm just going to start off, I mean, it's, it's very challenging for me because of the philosophical approach in just hearing eminent domain and understanding property owner's rights, and that's what makes me who I am. But I also look at the pragmatic approach, and we've been doing this for decades and for all the right reasons in safety. And I believe in safety, security and quality of life of our, of our county, and safety, security, that goes right to this. So therefore, I think being pragmatic is more important, and understanding the importance of actions, and not just sitting back and reading philosophy, you know? And it doesn't mean that we will do this, it means that it is something, you know, a tool to be used, or capable of being used. So I'm going to make the motion that we adopt the resolution as described by our county attorney in the Air Force Development, Carroll County Regional Airport, in using eminent domain if necessary by the Board of County Commissioners, is that?
That's a good summary.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Discussion. Philosophically, I cannot go along with this. I will not take a person's land. I think there's other ways we can go through and keep negotiating. You know, there's always, always a way, if you really go through and look at it. I think this is taking the easy way out, it's never been successfully used in the county, and where's it going to be used next if we come up with this? And I will not be a part of any eminent domain for taking a person's property.
So with that argument, I think it's disrespectful to our staff to say that we're taking the easy way out. Our staff has worked tirelessly to get us to a point where this safety enhancement project needs to occur. We are now under extreme time limits. We are now under extreme time limits, so there is no easy way out here, and I would not even come up with that thought when it comes to our staff, because I know how hard our staff has worked.
Are there other alternatives? None, this is it.
I don't think there are, because our staff has worked incredibly hard to get us to this point, and, you know, we've had a property owner that, that wants to, for lack of a better term, take an incredible advantage of, of taxpayer dollars by asking 20 times. We had one of our commissioners, two of our commissioners, go talk to them. I mean, with, you know, with the exception of the Pope, who I'm not even sure would make any, any additions there.
I don't know that for fact.
I think by now, we do know that for a fact, because there's no other alternatives that I believe are, are available here. So I don't want to, I, I'm not a big fan of this either. What I am a big fan of is not seeing an airplane on its top with two people inside of it, and then we all that were on this board coming back and saying, jeez, if only. That's what I'm not in favor of.
The, you know, it, for me, it's also, in kind of the same way as respecting, respecting the expertise that's in front of us. And, you know, I don't want to say we are at the end of the rope and we tie a knot, and the last thing to use is eminent domain, but it's to use the expertise that's in front of us. It's a skill set I don't have, and there's a whole lot of things as far as skills I don't have, and that's why we do rely on the skills and expertise. And we've, this is not made lightly whatsoever, and it's not like, you know, our legal has shared, Mr. Burke, that it is nothing that we will do, it is something that we can do, and if appropriate and necessary, it gives the allowance for the Board of County Commissioners to make that decision. Philosophically, I don't like this, I don't agree with it. But pragmatically, listening to the staff over the last four years, that I have, and you for much longer, I think it's necessary to take a very significant step in this, in this decision.
This is significant, this is government coming in and taking control, and I do equate this to Russia taking over Ukraine. I mean, that's a very radical difference, but here, you know, hey, I want that, we're just going to take it. That's the way I kind of look at it. And from the property owner's view, I know that's extreme.
A couple trees.
Believe me that, but I, I think there's, you know, ways to negotiate through this without going this route, and that's fine, you, I'm not going to win this, I know that. So I, philosophically, I just can't go along with it. Understand that. And that's all I ask, that you understand my point of view in this.
Oh, absolutely. Okay, is there any further discussion? Okay, calling for a vote, I motioned, got seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Against?
Aye.
Okay, 4-1, thank you very much. Okay, let's move on, text amendment to the Employment Campus District to allow solar energy conversion facilities. Boy, another fun topic.
Good afternoon.
All right, yeah, it is good afternoon. I'm here today, and I think Jason Green is here, he likes to sit in the back.
He's hiding.
Yeah, so this is a text amendment that we've come to regarding the Employment Campus District for the allowance of solar energy conversion facilities. We had this reviewed at the Planning and Zoning Commission on August 16th and September 20th. They forwarded it to the Board of County Commissioners with a favorable recommendation, and you should have that text in front of you. A public hearing was held on November 3rd, and we did have some people in the audience, I had more questions, but we didn't receive any other public comment on this particular item. So today, we are here for a decision on the text amendment. So again, the text amendment was to allow within our Employment Campus District, ground-mounted specifically, solar energy conversion facilities to be part of or separate, so that's the new language, from the development plan pending a conditional use approval. So that's new language as well. The ground-mounted solar field may be no more than 25 acres in size or not exceed 50% of the total acreage, or whichever is lesser. So I know that that was a question by Commissioner Frazier, and I think, you know, to, and I don't want to speak for Jason, I think the point of that was, if you had a 10-acre parcel, you couldn't go over five acres in that size. So that way, it would only limit it to half of the actual property that the solar panels would be located, but no more than 25 acres. We wouldn't have proliferation of these ground-mounted solar facilities. And then, the solar energy conversion facilities keeping the roof mounted may be subject to requirements of 158, or the mounted on a canopy in the parking area, which was already allowed. So that's kind of that whole Section H language. In the use table, it would change it from prohibited to conditional, and then in the definition of solar energy generating systems in commercial and employment campus districts, new language was added under 2, that solar energy conversion facilities shall be permitted in the C2 district when roof-mounted. Ground-mounted solar systems are permitted by conditional use in the C2, and then the new language is and Employment Campus District. And then, under 4C, that size limitation is added, there, there shall be a size limit for systems in the Employment Campus District to be no more than 25 acres or 50% of the gross site, whichever is lesser. So that is the request.
Is there anything about the buffer?
That would come under the landscaping requirements, which are already a part of this, like, in general, for the Employment Campus.
How many employment campuses do we have in the county right now?
Currently zoned two.
I make the motion, Board of County Commissioners, adopt the proposal, propose amendments to the EC District for the allowance of ground-mounted solar within the limits of the proposed amendment.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion, I got a second. Is there any discussion on this? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now let's talk about text amendments to the I-1, C-3 districts.
So this is a little more of a complex text amendment. This is regarding changes to the Business Industrial Park, which is only one particular district in the county under the I-1, and then changes moving forward to the Industrial Park in the I-1 zone, and the Business Park in the C-3 zone. Again, the same process as the Employment Campus text amendment. These amendments were forwarded to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their recommendation. They reviewed these proposed changes at their August 31st and September 20th meeting, and then there was a public hearing held on November 3rd. The only public comments we had, which were more just a discussion point, was from, I think Ms. Schaefer had some comments during that time, and Mr. Pelon, representing St. John Property regarding this text amendment, but we received no additional public comment regarding these changes. They've been posted on the Carroll County Planning website, under carrollrezoning.org, and here's our chart of the zoning text amendment process, and how it moves forward in the process. And then, the following it through the Planning Commission to the Board Action. So the proposed text has been posted since it went to Planning Commission, and you should have a clean copy, I believe, in front of you today. But again, simply the highlighted, underlined is the new language, highlighted is the new proposal. So adding a definition under 158002, Business Industrial Park. A project development approved under the Business Park provisions in effect prior to April 1, 2019. And that has to do with the only district that we have that's considered that in the current I-1 zone. So just clarifying language there, under 158079, in the I-1 Light Industrial District, was to remove the limits for self-storage facilities in the Business Industrial Park, which were limited prior, so now removing that limitation for the square footage of that, or percentage, I should say, percentage of the entire Business Industrial Park. And then, going to the next section, which is 2, that self-storage facilities shall be regulated by the requirements of Section 158079, which shall prevail over any conflict or inconsistency with any provisions required pursuant to the chapter. The requirements of this section shall not apply to self-storage facilities developed within the Business Park. And then next is actually, number five, is actually creating parking requirements for the Business Industrial Park and spaces for the self-storage as well. Right now, in order to calculate parking within the Business Industrial Park, you have to figure out what your different uses are, and kind of calculate it, and this use at a time within those parks. So this was creating just a formula for a general standard across the Business Industrial Park. Moving to page four, this moves to the C-3 district specifically, oh, I apologize, I'm sorry, we're still in the I-1. And this is to, number six is under the Commercial and Industrial Districts, the bulk requirements, 158084. Within these parks to have a zero yard proposed for the internal park, and I believe a drawing rendering was shown to where the exterior setback requirements to the parks would still be enforced, but internal to the park, there would be no, which makes sense, no additional setbacks, buffers, or landscaping requirements where this applies. And then, under the bulk requirements within the industrial districts, that was for the commercial, now for the industrial would be the same proposal under D. Now, moving specifically to the I-1 Industrial Park, which is 158156, the request is under 2E, to increase the retail square footage size allowance to 25,000 square feet. Currently, it is 10,000 square foot max.
What page are you on, Linda?
I'm sorry, number five, page five.
Thanks.
So to increase that, increase that square footage limitation.
Go down, it's, or go down a page.
Yeah, oh, I didn't move.
There you go. Up a little.
Thank you.
There you go, thank you.
I apologize.
Nope, it's all good.
Okay, no, oops.
Okay.
And now, moving to 3C, the following principle permitted uses are also permitted by, right, in an industrial park without being subject to the percentage limitations listed above. So A through T have percentage limitations, I'm sorry, those are prohibit, hold on, prohibited, sorry. So now, these are allowed, permitted without limitations. Currently, that's conference center and hotel, and the request is for medical or dental centers to also be included in that as well. Finally, moving to number seven, again, this would be, an industrial park shall be permitted to subdivide at the option of the developer, subject to applicable requirements of Chapter 155 related to subdivision. So basically, allowing them to subdivide as the parks were originally envisioned, there would be no subdivision allowed, but as was discussed for various financing reasons and staging of these types of parks, this makes sense. Again, creating parking requirements where we have none, so this would be an average of 2.3 parking spaces per 1,000 square feet of building, so as opposed to, again, looking at each individual use and trying to come up with a parking calculation for that, just standardize it across the park. Moving to page seven, F, a business park shall be permitted to subdivide, so moving to the Business Park section, which is now the Commercial High C-3 Zone, again, similar to the I-1, these should be allowed to be subdivided at the option of the developer, and then having a parking calculation. So this is slightly increased parking calculation from the industrial because of the more commercial nature, so instead of 2.3, it's the same, but it's 3.5 parking spaces per 1,000 feet of building area. And those are just a quick review of the changes that we've been discussing with these revisions.
And it's gone through Planning Commission twice, and public comment once.
Public hearing, correct.
Public hearing, I apologize.
And it's been posted on our website, and we've received no outside comments.
I'll move the Board of County Commissioners, adopt proposed amendments to I-1 District and C-3 District.
Second.
I got a motion, got a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Got a question, side note. Recreational cannabis is, you know, been brought up, obviously, and it's been passed. Is this going to be, how, how do you see this being addressed in Carroll County? I mean, right now, we have the medical, and we, you know, but, I mean, I, I just don't know. And I was asked, I'm like, I don't know, I can make assumptions, but I'd rather not.
So the law was just passed, and I think at this point, we're going to wait for guidance to see what the state recommends.
Right.
I will say this, it can't be zoned out of existence, we know this too from the medical, so we're going to be following what happens in the General Assembly and looking for guidance from the state to see where this leads.
And that's pretty much what, what I shared. I said, there's, the law's there, but now legislation has to occur, so, okay.
Yep.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. All right, thank you so much, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving. Okay, Chris, any callers?
Yes, sir.
Okay, anything for open administration at this time? One-on-one, you come on up. And let's talk about next week, Monday, November 28th and Tuesday, November 29th. We have nothing scheduled. On Wednesday, November 30th, is a Board of Education and delegation meeting that Commissioner Boucher and I will be attending. Thursday, December 1st, we go into open session. FY24 Maryland Shelter and Transitional Housing Facilities capital grants from Ms. Steckel, market study, job classification, structure assessment by the Segal Group, okay, from our HR. Department of Technology Services staffing, again, HR will be discussing. Sheriff DeWees will be coming in. Approval to lease additional space at the former North Carroll High School. Discontinued Trailblazer South Carroll routes will be discussed. Removal and replacement of cooling equipment and IT. Request approval for grant application, acceptance of award, Century High School Stormwater Management retrofit. Request approval for grant application, acceptance of award, Carroll County Fall 2023 tree planting. At 4:00 PM, there was open house over at Sergio's. Commissioner Wance and I are attending, I can't remember what that one is.
CLSI.
CLSI, that's right. And then Catherine's Cause, Commissioner Wance will be attending at 7:00 PM.
I will attend with you as well.
Okay. On Friday, I am attending the Carroll County Realtors Legislation Luncheon. I, I know where it is, I just have it on my phone. Saturday, there's a Mission BBQ VIP brunch that I will be attending, you did last time also.
I'll be there.
Yeah, so.
I mean, I'm almost out, you don't need my name on there anymore.
I want your name on there.
That's a Davey.
I want, I want you.
That's out eve.
You are there.
That's a yummy evening.
That's out eve.
You are a commissioner.
Yummy morning.
No.
And then-
You're in until the 5th.
Sunday, I will be providing a podcast, talking about Commissioner Wance the entire time. On Monday, December 5th-
Really?
...is the Swearing Inn of the 62nd Board of County Commissioners, down in the Reagan Room, 003, and it's open to the public. Holiday lighting ceremony on Tuesday, December 6th, at 5:00 PM. Wednesday, December 7th, Pearl Harbor Day. Good Scout Award Breakfast, where I'll be attending, over Pleasant Valley Fire Hall. Awesome.
I'll be serving you that day.
As you should be. Westminster Senior Center Holiday Lunch at 11:30. As you should be. Westminster Senior Center Holiday Lunch at 11:30 that day. I'll see what I can do. Put me in, put me on that. And then, a Planning Commission, which is virtual, and we'll see who will be attending. Thursday, December 8th, we will go into open session for the first time as the 62nd Board. And we have nothing scheduled right now.
Give you a very short session.
And then, at 6:30 PM.
Got a program going slow.
We have the MML quarterly meeting. I know I'll be attending. I believe the others will as well, and let's find out who they are. You're no longer a commissioner, so you're not going to be on there. Friday, December 9th, South Carroll Senior Center Holiday Lunch. You put me on there as a, you know, as a potential. And then, there'll be a podcast the following Sunday, and I'm not sure who's going to be giving it, but it will not be me. Is there anything else during this transitional time? Seeing none, I need.
Motion to adjourn?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Motion to adjourn. I'm very happy Thanksgiving. Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against?
No.